While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on Channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
21, Exeter Planning Board Meeting. I'd like to start off by introducing members of our board. And I will start, Langdon Plummer, I'm Chair of the Board. And Nick, could you please?
Mark.
Mark Detor.
Next brother, Mark.
He's been doing this for years, Mark.
Don't feel bad. Don't feel bad. He gets his own name wrong.
I'm fluent English.
Regular members, Lee.
Pete Cameron Clerk.
Thank you.
Aaron Brown, Vice Chair.
Ollie Cowan, Select Board Member.
Jen Martel.
Nancy Belanger, Alternate.
Thank you. Let's see. I have to have... Well, one, two, three, four, five. I got it going. Mark, I'm going to ask you to...
Not Nick.
Not Nick. I mean, Nick's your brother.
Thank you.
Okay. First, let's take the approval of the minutes of July 15, 2021. So the floor is open to that. Comments, please?
Wait, do other people already think? I'll wait.
Lee, you're obviously ready. Go right ahead.
Okay. Um, line 21. The green space design that doesn't reduce density and maximizes green space. That sentence is kind of an odd one. I don't really know how to say it. I don't know if we can figure out what that means and edit it or just eliminate it because it doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
It doesn't make sense, but... Maybe, maybe, um...
I think it's trying to say that 25 of the 50 feet is for recreational, excuse me, recreational purposes. Thank you, I didn't look that.
Maybe we should strike that sentence, I'm not sure.
I get it.
Yeah. Maybe that would be easier.
Strike that sentence.
Just to clarify, on line 201, creating a SF lot, maybe square foot lot, just spell it out, square foot lot, because that's a little vague for anybody who might not know what that means.
I'm thinking he meant a single-family lot.
Single family, see? Not square foot. That makes sense because square foot lot didn't make sense.
Yeah, a one-square-foot lot, yeah.
Yeah. Square foot, and I thought maybe there was...
The question too, because I remember talking about that.
I think I remember him saying he meant said, "single..."
Single family.
So maybe we just write that out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, line 210. David Hadden of 12 Tamarlane noted that the flow and vibe of the company is different. I don't know if that's what he says. I'm not sure what that means.
Community.
Community?
I believe so.
Ah, yep.
Community. Um, line 220, at the end of this sentence, I think that's meant to say water level. It says water low. It will not change the water low, probably water level.
Yep.
Water flow.
Or flow.
Water flow. Ah.
Cause flow.
You think that's...
The water flow and cause flow.
I do.
That makes more sense.
Because the area assessed is, what they were talking about was more water getting onto the subject crop.
Right. Okay, I'm zero for four here, so should I keep going? I'm not interpreting very well. The next one is my sentence, so I think I can do this one. Line 266, I would like to add after different, or I would like, yeah, after different, I would like to add conventional development. And then, and then say if the current open space design is rejected. The way it's written isn't really what I, what I was meaning to say. So, to do a different or to do a conventional development, if the current open space design is rejected, and then delete the development word on 267. That makes sense. And on 291, monitoring, after monitoring, I think it would be helpful to put monitoring the conservation land. And then there's a typo on line 324, after swamp white oaks, it should be were instead of where. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Anyone else? I accept the motion. Someone would like to make one? Accept as, as changes as noted?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of July 15, as noted.
Thank you. Second? Someone else speak at once?
Second.
Thank you. Move and second it. We'll do a voice vote, please. Those in favor, please intend to keep a saying aye.
Aye.
Abstain, because I wasn't there.
Haven't gotten abstention yet.
Well, I jumped and gone.
Abstention.
Please.
Yes.
I will also abstain.
Okay, two abstentions. Very good. Next, I'm going to modify the agenda slightly. We have an item of requested extension, excuse me, Gateway at Exeter LLC Planning Board Case Number 19-15 and 19-16, 170 Epping Road, request for extension of conditional approval. Dave, do you, would you just address that, please?
Sure. In your packet, you have a letter from H. Hayner Swanson Incorporated, from James Petropolis, and it's dated July 15, 2021. On behalf of our client Gateway of Exeter of Nashville, we respectfully request to be placed on the next available Exeter Planning Board agenda in order to respectfully request a one-year extension to our August 2019 Exeter Planning Board Site Plan Conditional Use Permit and Lot Line Adjustment/Subdivision Plan Approvals for the above referenced property. There are several reasons for this request. First, an appeal of the site plan approval stayed the proceedings. Second, the inefficiencies of the COVID-19 pandemic. And third, the marketing effort by our client of the proposed commercial building. In advance, we thank you for your cooperation in processing this information, and don't hesitate to contact if you have any questions. This is their first extension. They were approved in, on August 20, 2020. So any extension motion request would be to extend the site plan and lot line adjustments, subdivision, site plan, and wetlands conditional use permit to August 20, 2022.
Do I hear such a motion? Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, before we discuss the motion...
Yes.
Have we not been asking applicants to appear before us, Dave, when they ask for a second extension?
No, this is the first one.
Oh, I thought I...
They put in August 2019 in their case number. They submitted in 2019, their case number is 19, but they got approval, have the approval letter right here. Please be advised at the meeting of August 20, 2020...
Okay, so this is the first one.
So this is the first one.
All right, but we still have, though, in place, do we not, a kind of informal request that an applicant appear on the second and third requests for extensions?
Yes, generally we...
I believe we should.
Yeah, I don't know if it's the second or the third, but yeah, it's generally not the first, and that's what I relay to people. I said, you know, you can come if you want, you know, if they have any questions, but if they have any questions, we can just table it and, you know, and have them come at that time. So I just tell people generally on the first one, they don't generally have any questions.
First one, you're good to not show up, but the second and third, I think the board would like to hear from the applicant.
Yeah, understood.
I'm speaking for the board, and I shouldn't.
I think you're accurately representing how we've acted in the past.
Yep.
And the first one usually is pretty straightforward.
Yes.
Unless something's come to light that there's an issue that's been discovered since the approval.
Yes.
Which is not the case here.
Or it goes, it goes to the conditions.
Right.
Which this is not.
Right.
Correct.
So we're good. So I'll move the motion to extend.
I'll second it. Move and second it. Voice vote, be okay on this?
I believe so.
We'll do, we'll do a voice vote, so those in favor, please intend to keep a saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Abstention, the ayes have it. Aye. All right. New business.
Mr. Chairman, may I say, do we have it up there about attendees? Do you have it? Because I can't see it up here on Zoom. Is there anyone here?
Jason Florida.
Is that it? Just one attendee?
Uh, well, the Exeter host.
Okay.
Chair.
All right, I just wanted to make sure someone was, you know, someone might have been representing this via Zoom.
No acrum is our second host.
And been here anyway, so I guess it's a moot point since you approved it, but I just wanted to check on that, because usually you can, it's up here, and I can see if there's any attendees on Zoom.
I see. Well, I'm not sharing tonight. Neuroenergy Corporation Planning Board Case Number 21-4, 158 Epping Road. It's a continued public hearing, site plan review for proposed gas station slash convenience store slash car wash. Dave, you, would you like to start this off, please?
The applicant appeared at the last meeting of July 1. Was it the last meeting? Oh, no, no, no.
No.
Two meetings ago, because we had a site...
Yeah, two meetings ago. The applicant appeared before the board on July 1, and then the board scheduled an additional meeting to tonight to accommodate their return. A sidewalk was scheduled and held on Thursday, July 15. Subsequently, the applicant submitted revised plans, supporting documents dated July 15. They provided comment letters and so forth, but you also, I passed them out, I was going to have the board, I mean, the applicant pass them out to you, but we, we had copies that we received, so Nancy was kind enough to pass them out. They submitted additional information since the packets went out last week. That's before you, that they can explain to you, you know, the differences and what they've done. The applicant had provided a traffic impact and access study dated 4/20 with their, 4/20/21 with their original submittal. A traffic peer review was conducted by VHB on behalf of the town, and the applicant responded to the comments. Letter, the VHB letter dated May 18, and then a copy of that response letter from July 15 was included in your packet. That was subsequently reviewed by VHB in the last week. They sent it to the applicant. The applicant has responded to that, and I have that information, but I thought it best to, you know, they could explain, and I have, they could explain that, you know, their position on their responses, but I also have Jason Plord as a panelist on Zoom that I would like him to, you know, give detail to the board, his outstanding comments, what they are and so forth, you know, when you get to that discussion. So I have the traffic engineer peer review here, so you can get, you can have all that information.
Thank you.
The, one of the things that was brought up was a left turn lane at the TRC. They, you know, did prefer left turns, allowing left turns on Epping Road. We know what happens up and down the corridor, but, you know, to any chance we get in redevelopment to limit left-hand turns that, you know, aren't a very high level of service, probably I would estimate, I think is a D in their report, but they can correct me if I'm wrong on that. But to eliminate those because they are off the light and, you know, a right-in, right-out route would be acceptable. They, they did not change the plans to that. VHB had that same comment. They did not make that change, and they still have a full unrestricted intersection design onto Epping Road. So I'll just point that out to the board. That would be a discussion point for the board to determine how they want to move forward with that. Also, there was some TRC comments. Most of them have been addressed, but I just wanted to point out a couple I mentioned in my memorandum. Comment number 18, section 9.7.5.2 requires that parking areas shall be adequately shaded to reduce amount of heat, amount of reflected heat. The applicant did respond by saying no trees have been added. We had that conversation at the Technical Review Committee and putting a couple of trees, deciduous trees along the front of the frontage, not with the intention of blocking the site from view, but to add, you know, reflection and, you know, and visibility, you know, for the most part of the site. But they have preferred not to, to do that. And I believe possibly the board should consider that could be a waiver if they're, if they're not shading the, you know, parking as required, and they have not submitted a waiver request. Comment number 19, section 9.7.5.3 states that where feasible, a minimum of 10 feet of landscaping is required between the edge of any paved surface and the property line. The applicant, they have eight feet. The applicant, we did mention this at the TRC, the applicant responded saying that, you know, they got a variance and, and they did get a variance from the ZBA, but this is in our site plan and subdivision regulations, and the zoning board doesn't have any authority over those. Only that authority rests with the board. So, you know, they, you know, it says where feasible, so I suggest the board consider that and, you know, hear from the applicant and see if they can make a determination if that's feasible or not, and if it's not, then, you know, then you can allow the eight feet. And comment number 22, the, we raised the issue about a sidewalk, because the board has been pretty consistent since I've been here and before I got here on the Epping Road corridor and other projects that requiring, asking to provide pedestrian access to the site, to provide a sidewalk along the frontage at Gateway, Ray Farm, and 80 Epping Road, I think were the last few that I'm aware of that were on this corridor. They did say that they will provide a contribution to a sidewalk fund, so I don't know what the board wants to do about that or the feelings or what they want to require, but it's something that the TRC brought up on, based on prior actions of the board. There are no waivers being sought at this time in conjunction with the application, but, you know, based on the conversation, maybe required. And in the event the board decides to take action on the application, I did provide a motion, and I also prepared conditions of approval if you get to that point. And they, they did, those were the only, you know, I don't want to highlight just, there's just those few comments. Everything else has been, you know, in my opinion, has been satisfactorily addressed as far as the TRC comments go. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board for the record. Chris Tumula, I'm a project manager with Green and Peterson out of Salem, Hampshire. So first and foremost, I want to thank the board for accommodating us on this special meeting tonight. As I mentioned at the last meeting, we are under some critical timeframes based on some development agreements, so again, I want to thank the board for allowing us to have a special meeting tonight. As Dave mentioned, since the first planning meeting on July 1, we have a sidewalk on July 15. I responded to two sets of comments letters by both VHB as well as UEI, as well as the comments by the TRC. For those who are there, I think the sidewalk was very beneficial to everybody. We, as everybody, the people who were there noticed that the, the front curb line was staked out, so you could kind of see where the actual curb line was proposed to where the existing curb line is along Epping Road. And you also have to see the, the limits of the development with the fencing along the, the south as well as the west-hand side of the development. As I indicated at the site, the, the plans that you see tonight have not really changed substantially with regards to the actual structure of the plans compared to the original plans. The, the really, the focal points you want to discuss tonight are really the intersection of, of Epping Road where the proposed canopy is and the shared access easement. As I had discussed at the initial, the initial meeting, we had a red line plan showing what we were proposing to do. We've now taken that red line plan and incorporated that into the plan, and this, this plan is the plan that we had actually presented at the, at the sidewalk for those who were there. Additionally, as we had mentioned, so we were now showing a do not block, do not block the, the intersection signage and striping along Continental Drive. And then the other, the other really key change to the plan is we have this now a substantially large underground stormwater detention system on site where we didn't have that before. So those are really the two key features that we've really added to the plans based on TRC, UEI, as well as VHB comments. All the other comments, all the other comments that we addressed were really notes, clarifications, explanations of, of reasons that we, that we did what we did. So, so with the, with the revised plans, we submitted plans dated 7/12/21 which were responding to the UEI, VHB, and TRC comments. We received a second set of comments from UEI on Friday, which we've responded to and submitted to the town, I believe it was Tuesday, and we also received comments from VHB, I believe it was two days ago, and we responded quickly, and we got those back to the town, I believe, the next day. Again, we understand that there's a critical time from the development groups. We want to get the comments back to the town as fast as possible. So the only, the only item potentially unresolved with the UEI comments, in our opinion, is really comment number 34. Just give me one moment. So in, so in comment number four, they, comment number 34, they're asking us to model the, the existing stormwater system downstream, and if I can show you what they're looking So obviously, here's our development. We have the underground stormwater systems that I had mentioned, that I had mentioned, and we are connecting into the existing drain line which, which crosses our property line, goes to a catch basin, and then ultimately outflows across the property of 156 Epping And this, so this is an aerial overlay plan, so basically this dash line here is an existing drainage system. We're connecting generally in this area, and this drainage system ultimately flows all the way across 156 and ultimately discharges downstream across the properties. So based on the, based on the UEI comments, they do acknowledge that we are reducing the peak rate of runoff with our proposed stormwater system. I'm sure you're all familiar with stormwater, how it works. We're required to meet the peak rate of runoff for all design storms for the town standards, and in this case, we meant it for both the town as well as the state standards. So what I want to do is just pass out, this is an excerpt from our Stormwater Management Report that everybody has, but I've just kind of highlighted the significant decreases that we've proposed on site, which in our opinion really alleviate any potential concerns downstream. The, the reduction in peak rate of runoff, the reduction in impervious coverage, the increase in on-site stormwater management, bio retention, stormwater treatment with, with the filtering systems, the overall stormwater management system is, is much better than it was originally.
Thank you. Thank you.
So again, so this is page three from our, from the Current Stormwater Management Report. I've highlighted the pre-development and post-development rates, as well as the change in runoff in comparison of the two. As you can see, for the two-year storm, we have a decrease of 4.3 CFS up to the 50-year the way across 156 and ultimately discharges downstream across the properties. So based on the, based on the UEI comments, they do acknowledge that we are reducing the peak rate of runoff with our proposed stormwater system. I'm sure you're all familiar with stormwater, how it works. We're required to meet the peak rate of runoff for all design storms for the town standards. And in this case, we meant for both the town as well as the state standards. So what I want to do is just pass out, this is an excerpt from our Stormwater Management Report that everybody has, but I've just kind of highlighted the significant decreases that we've proposed onsite, which in our opinion really alleviate any potential concerns downstream. The reduction in peak rate runoff, the reduction in impervious coverage, the increase in onsite stormwater management, bio retention, stormwater treatment with the filtering systems, the overall stormwater management system is, is much better than it was originally. So again, so this is page three from our, from the current stormwater management report. I've highlighted the pre-development and post-development rates as well as the change in runoff in comparison of the two. As you can see, for the two-year storm, we have a decrease of 4.3 CFS. Up to the 50-year storm, we have a decrease of 8.2 CFS. Now, I'm sure you're, you know, you may or may not be familiar with stormwater management and I can give you all the nerdy stuff you want, what I'm going to talk about, but I won't bore you with that. I'm sure you're, you're used to seeing applicants come in and saying, well, we have a reduction in peak rate runoff and it's half a CFS or one CFS. And that's great. Look at the chart and we are reducing these by over 50% in all the design storms. So a couple, as I mentioned earlier, so couple that with the decrease in impervious coverage, the increase in stormwater treatment. In our opinion, it's very clear that we've gone above and beyond what should be required. So I respectfully ask the board, agree with us that we do not need to analyze anything downstream of the existing stormwater system. Other than that, based on the second set of UEI comments, we've addressed them, as I mentioned earlier, we've submitted response comments the other day. And those are, all those comments, again, there are minor comments, there are no changes to the plans of the notes, clarifications. We added some rigid insulation over the water and sewer crossing. We moved the hydrant to within the right of way. We removed the, the water shut off valve a little closer to the right of way. All minor, minor items, nothing that's really having any real german effect to the plans. With regards to the outstanding TRC comments, I was originally prepared to sort of push back on some of those comments, but prior to the meeting, I talked to Naria and we're, we're more than happy to provide three street trees as we, as we discussed on the, at the sidewalk. We'll provide them in the right of way, so we're not blocking the sign, which we did get a variance for to have the sign close to the property. So we have no issue in providing the, you know, up to three street trees. With regards to the ten-foot landscaping strip, although we feel that the variance does supersede the planning board and the site plan regulations, we're currently showing 7.8 feet. We can increase that to 10 feet and therefore have no need for any waiver. And it's a minor change to the plan. There's no change in circulation. The tanker truck can still get in and around and what it does is just provides a couple more additional feet of landscaping onsite. So those, those, those two changes are not in the set of plans, but again, as I mentioned, these are items that we just discussed prior to the meeting. With the sidewalk, I'd love to have some dialogue with the, with the board. We are, we are reluctant to show or propose any new sidewalk on the development only because of the unknown future roadway improvements. What we would hate to do is provide a sidewalk, have the sidewalk built, obviously on behalf of Naria, and then five years down the road, 10 years, whatever it is, the town comes in, upgrades the roadway system and now that sidewalk is now obsolete and needs to be moved. So we would prefer to pay into some sort of a fund if there, if there is a mechanism. But that's, that's sort of our stance on that. So I'd be happy to answer any of the comments with regards to the UEI comments, any staff comments, et cetera. Tim is here from our office to discuss any traffic related items. But again, we're hoping to get a conditional approval tonight only because, you know, we are up through with some critical timelines with the, with the deal with the property owner. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
With the drainage going offsite and I'm looking at, you know, 3.1 cubic feet per second in a two-year event, is there a drain? Do you have a drainage easement across map 47 lot 1-1? So what's to prevent if he sells that lot from plugging that up?
Yep. My understanding that there is a, there is a drainage easement for 158 through 156. I do not have it on me, but I'm.
Is that on the plans?
It may, it may or may not be noted on the existing conditions plan. If it's not, we can definitely provide it, provide it to the town.
Okay, yeah, that's not that I'm aware of.
Yep, we can definitely, we can definitely provide that information.
Okay. Sorry, that's all I have.
Well, I'd like to ask a question related to that. Has that, or is that currently being used for the same purpose from the existing dealership?
Yes. So the, the current dealership, everything drains across the site to the existing drainage system that is within both 156 and then ultimately towards 158. What we are allowed to do and required to do is to show that there's no increase in the design points. In this case, we call the existing drainage system along the property, that's design point number one. And then design point number two is anything that flows across the site, which is a very minimal amount, towards, towards Epping Road. And so in that chart, you can see that's design point number two. So there's much less area going to that. We still show reductions in that, but everything else is designed in accordance with town and state requirements.
So it's currently being used and has the capacity for its new use.
Yeah.
Same use from a different business.
Absolutely. And I will say, the stormwater requirements nowadays are much different than they were, say, 20 years ago. A storm event that you, that would be required to model your, any, any system in the town, any system whatsoever, if it was, if the system was built 20 years ago, if you ran a model based on the current precipitation rates that are required now, as in the 15% increase due to the Great Bay area, none of those systems would currently pass mustard and none of those would have enough capacity. What we're doing is we're reducing the amount of impervious coverage, therefore reducing the amount of runoff, therefore reducing peak rate runoff to the site. And then by choking back everything with this very, very large system, and as you all saw out there, the whole site's paved, we have a site that's almost paved, it's really like a belts and suspenders type of, type of situation. We're reducing the peak rates substantially, you know, and the reason we did that is because the onsite pipe system that we're proposing needs to meet the 10-year design storm based on the town regulations. So therefore the onsite system was really sort of oversized to make sure that those proposed pipes don't overtop and cause flooding onsite or cause flooding downstream. And that's why there's such a decrease in the peak rate runoff for all, for all storm events. So hopefully that's, that's not too nerdy for you, but I can be as technical as you want if you'd like.
All right. Dave, when do we want to ask him? Jason Floor?
Whenever you would like. If you'd like him to talk now, then I'm sure he'd be willing and able.
Would you like to hear more of that or would you like to talk first?
Can I ask a question real quick?
Yes.
So we received drawings in our packet last week and then we received these printed drawings. Are those the same or are there, is there a difference?
So we received, so the original drawings that you received last week or so, whenever it was, those were responding to the original TRC comments, the original UEI comments and the original VHB comments. We subsequently on this past Friday, received more comments from UEI, which were a lot of clarifications. And then we received comments a couple of days ago from VHB and we've responded to those. Again, knowing that there's a time crunch on the applicant's point of view, we want to get something before the board. And I do know it's, it's a little, it may be a little confusing getting all this information, but, you know, we had to do, do our client the service to get everything to the town as fast as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Can you run through the changes?
Absolutely. Comment number one was with regards to the driveway locations and I think we've talked about that a lot and we can keep on discussing that as you, as you want. Our response was, we understand, we're going to have continued discussions with the planning board regarding the driveways. We still feel that due to truck circulation and the revised driveway profile that we're showing, we've created a much safer environment for cross connection, for tanker circulation. We need the left-hand turn lane for the tanker access out of the site. We did, we did discuss that on the, on the sidewalk as well. Their next comment was the ultimate discharge location of the existing closed drainage system should be shown or indicated on the plans. Our existing conditions plan, we are now showing that on the existing conditions plan, so that's been addressed.
Hold on one second.
Absolutely.
What did you just add?
Yep, so existing conditions plan should be sheet two. Down the bottom, you might see a match line and that'll show where the existing pipes are shown. And I can show you a large screen if you'd like.
Sure, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay. So the existing drainage system comes through the site here, through some catch basins and ultimately leads here and then here. So the original plan, we were just basically showing the pipes stopping here, we weren't continuing it. Now showing it across the site, there's another catch basin here, the match line is through here, so then that continues out to another catch basin and the, and then the outfall.
Great. Thank you.
Their next comment is with regards to the estimated seasonal high water table on the detail. We had shown the, it's just a schematic detail, so we've just revised detail to, based on their comment. We just showed a line a little higher on the detail. This has no german effect to the, to the plans. Next comment is please see additional comment on the existing downstream. We've talked about that. Next comment talks about some units in the stormwater model. We've updated the stormwater model to address those, those units. Their next comment talks about the timer concentration of six minutes. We've addressed, we've changed the model to address that. There's no change to the, the overall pre and post numbers. The next comment was sort of a head scratcher on our, on our mind. Their comment indicates that the soil survey indicates A and B soils with urban fill while hydrocath model uses B and C soils. A, B, C, and D, those are the different classifications of soils. Nowhere in the NRCS soil mapping, nowhere on our plans based on the HIST mapping, do we call out A soils anywhere? Our test bits don't, don't call out anything for A soils. So we're just unsure what that comment was. So nothing changes on the plans. We responded that, that's, that's not, you know, that's not, that's applied to us. The next comment talks about the infiltration rate. In our hydrocath stormwater report, we break down how that 1.65 infiltration rate is supported based on the NRCS, the NRCS mapping. The next comment talks about some warning, warning notes within the model. We've addressed those already and there's no change to the, to the model itself. Another head scratcher on our end, the roof area of the pre-development model do not appear to agree with the soil types. Again, the soil types onsite are B and D. It's just, it's unknown where that comment was, so there was no change to the plans there. The next comment talks about the seasonal high water and the underground stormwater system. We provided documentation from the manufacturer that the stormwater system can handle the higher groundwater table and there's document in your package that indicates that. Comment number 34 was the comment I was talking about earlier with regards to the downstream modeling. And then with regards to actual plan changes, I had mentioned, we moved the hydrant to be now within the right of way. Comment 36, the water service, the sewer manhole two and three, we've added the rigid insulation on top of that on the plans. Comment 37 talks about the curb stop, we've moved that close to the right of way. Comment 38 talks about the, the truck turn plan, indicates the moving on to the left turn, turning on to Epping Road. We've discussed that and I'd be happy to discuss that even further, but again, based on the truck turning movement on the site, we need to be able to access, we can get the truck in, but we have to get it out and the only way to get it out is, is outside of, through Epping Road. Comment number 39 with regards to the fire truck, we've now shown a new truck turn plan, shown the truck going around the back of these convenience store as well as the back of the car wash. And then comment number 40 talks about signage details. We do have some information that we received based on discussions with the code enforcement officer Doug Eastman with regards to menu boards and essentially, and we can provide this as well, the menu boards for the car wash are not considered a menu board, so therefore it doesn't equate to the signage and so therefore we need to account that as part of the overall signage for the, for the development. So that was, that was all the UEI comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. How about we, Dave, how about we hear Mr. Floor's?
Yeah, I just emailed him. So he's, he's ready to go.
All right.
If Exeter TV can, he's a panelist. Somehow we can get him up on the screen. They're not, I mean, just go.
Okay, I'm up here. I'll do that.
Okay, which one?
This one. Oh, what's his name?
Sorry. I couldn't hear you, Dave.
Jason Floor.
Jason Floor.
I have another communication device. Click three times.
He can talk. He should be able to talk.
Oh, can you hear me?
Oh, there he is.
Oh, hey, there he is.
All right. Good evening, Jason Floor of VHB. Thank you for inviting me to this, this planning board hearing this evening. We've conducted a peer review of GPI's traffic study and their corresponding responses to our comments. First off, I just want to acknowledge that Mr. Tumula and Mr. Letton are very good at their jobs, I've worked with them in the past, they know what they're doing, they, they have designed many, many successful sites in the past. So I want to kind of at least lay the groundwork first before I start hammering on that a little bit. As far as our comments, there's really two outstanding comments that we have, one of which is an easy one. It's regarding the Continental Drive, do not block intersection, the striping and the signage. We just want them to make sure that they're coordinating with the town engineer. The reason why I'm bringing that up is because at the select board meeting, the recent select board meeting where it was talking about a, an intersection to the south, I'll leave it at that because I don't want to bring in different projects into play this evening. But as far as that type of striping and signage, just want to make sure that the town is on board with that. It is a standard traffic engineering measure, traffic controlling measure. It's supposed to be able to stop cars from blocking an intersection, whether it's for a driveway or another roadway. The signs are white with black lettering so that police officers can enforce that. So that's, that's a positive thing from a traffic engineering perspective. And I believe that at the select board meeting, some residents were speaking about how not everybody abides by them. So that's why I want to make sure that the town engineer is on board with that type of a device. The other issue is with respect to the driveway on Epping Road. So as part of the original site plan application, there were two internal driveways off of that shared access point. And the easternmost is still shown on the plans that you see in front of you. The westernmost was on the other side, so if you're looking at the plans with north going up, to the left of the fueling tanks coming straight down. And that western driveway has since been closed. Reason, my understanding, based on some of the comments or the responses to our comments from GPI has been that the access easement did not extend that far back. So they wanted to maintain their driveway within that, that shared access easement area that's closest to Epping Road. Now, the problem with maintaining that driveway is that there's a lot of activity taking place within 70 feet of that stop line for cars exiting from that shared driveway onto Epping Road. We're going from, at least from the estimations that, that were in the traffic study and the revised information provided in some of the responses, is that we're talking about during the weekday morning, a total of 23 vehicles would be using that driveway associated with a Jaguar dealership. Going up to 341 vehicles would be using that driveway. In the evening, there were 44 estimated for the Jaguar dealership, going up to 245. Now that's a total combination of the entering and exiting vehicles. It's a lot of cars entering and exiting a site where they have to make an immediate decision upon entering that area between the two properties. You have people that would be coming out of the proposed development, you'd be having people coming down the Al's Automotive and Truck Center straight through. You have parking right there that's not blocked or protected at all, just striped parking for the Al's Automotive and Truck Center. And then you also have cars coming out, you know, coming northbound from the Al's Traffic Automotive and Truck Center. So there's a lot of activity taking place within close proximity to Epping Road. So we, we had suggested a couple of things, one of which was to, how about going back to that other driveway location further away from Epping Road? You know, close to the closest one to Epping Road and open up that other one. And, you know, based on, on the responses, and I know Mr. Letton is here this evening, so he can correct me if I say anything out of turn or if I'm mistaken at all. But ultimately it came down to, for the connection between the two sites and for the truck circulations, the tanker trucks that is accessing the proposed development. The other issue that we had with the location of the driveway, this time it's actually with a curb cut on Epping Road, is that if you look at the site plans, and I'm not sure if you have the site plans in front of you, but on the recent site plan- The other issue that we had with the location of the driveway, this time it's actually with a curb cut on Epping Road, is that if you look at the site plans, and I'm not sure if you have the site plans in front of you, but on the recent site plan package, I don't have an electronic copy of it or I would be showing it this evening, I just have a hard copy, but it's on, I think sheet four of 13 would probably show you the best example of what I'm going to be talking about. When you have, when you are entering in off of Epping Road, you're going directly into the oncoming cars that are exiting from the drive-through area, from the Dunkin' Donuts, from the car wash area. Cars are being directed head-on into those cars coming from the drive-through area. So I think that's a safety concern. Really, really hasn't been addressed other than those two suggestions that we made, one being about possibly relocating that driveway further to the north a little bit, so at least you're not going to have those head-on collisions, or two, we suggested closing that eastern internal curb cut and opening the western one. Both of those were quote, neither of those two, the two options offered by VHB for consideration appear to be advantageous. Advantageous to who? Advantageous to the safety of patrons of either facility or advantageous to the tanker trucks entering and circulating the site? So that's really what the planning board needs to decide this evening is, do you feel that this is a safety concern or not as far as the location of that internal driveway? I think it is and I don't think that anybody, I don't think that, I don't want to speak for anybody else, but I certainly would not put my PE license, my reputation or my name saying that it is a safe condition. I think that there's a lot of conflict happening very close to Epping Road. As far as Epping Road, you know, the traffic volumes on Epping Road going northbound, the left turn lane to go onto Continental Drive does not queue up past this driveway. However, the through movements will. Those through movements, if they're blocking the driveway, what does that mean for anybody trying to exit the site from the driveway, the shared driveway, onto Epping Road going northbound? They would turn left from the site and hopefully wait for a gap in the traffic stream, or they would sit in that northbound left turn lane and wait for their opportunity to merge in. It's not a two-way left turn lane, a center turn lane, it's an exclusive left turn lane destined for Continental Drive. And that's why earlier you heard from Mr. Sharples talking about the potential of a right-in, right-out driveway. I think that, you know, I'm not as concerned about the northbound left turns into the site. I'm more concerned about the left turns exiting the site onto northbound Epping Road. You also heard Mr. Tamula talking about not, not really sure about what the future roadway conditions are going to look like and talking about the sidewalk. I'm not going to talk about the sidewalk, but I am going to talk about the access associated with that future widening. Our company had worked on a corridor study along Epping Road and some of the improvements that were identified was a potential of striping a center turn lane along Epping Road. Once that's in place, that allows people to be able to turn left from this driveway and go northbound. But right now, they would be turning left into an exclusive left turn lane and not a center turn lane. So they're two different types of striping for two different types of uses. So it's, it's really almost like a, you know, do you approve the project with a right-in, right-out now and then they can come back in the future when that center turn lane is striped for full access? That being allowing the left turns out. So that's, that's really where our last kind of concern is. I don't want to say that it's an issue, it's a concern. It's a concern because of the safety for the traveling public on Epping Road, for the left turns coming out going northbound, as well as for any of the customers at either of the two facilities that are using that central point right near where their proposed internal driveway is off of that shared driveway. And that's all I have. I'm here if you want to ask me any questions.
Questions?
Good chair. Thank you for your presentation. I have a question. If you're proposing that they potentially put in an exit area onto Epping Road, where, where on the site plan would you see that best placed? And I know you can't show us because you don't, you just have a hard copy, but in looking at any of the type that's in, it's, I'm looking at the large green right-of-way area. Are you saying that it would go through some part of that and go onto Epping Road?
I would suggest shifting the driveway up a little bit closer to Continental Drive.
Right.
The driveway's going to be blocked anyway. So the reason for that, that suggestion, I don't want to say recommendation because we're not, we're not here to design the site. We're not here to, you know, tell you what you should approve and what you shouldn't approve. We're just here to be able to review the information that's provided in front of us and coming up with different recommendations as far as what might be a safer alternative. And, you know, as far as if we shifted that driveway to the north a little bit so that at least the entering cars off of Epping Road, we're not going directly into cars that are exiting from the drive-through area, at least there'd be a little bit of time and they'd be on the correct side of the road. If, like, you pretend that there's a striping out there, WLO center line to be able to separate directional flow on the site. But right now, the way that it's lined up is that entering cars are going directly straight into exiting cars from the drive-through area.
Excellent.
Now, that, that doesn't say anything about left turns getting out of the driveway onto Epping Road or that internal decision point. It's just, you know, it's just a slight suggestion as far as fixing that and making it a little bit safer.
Is there a point where it would be, where it could potentially be too close to the traffic light or does that, I mean, do you have to keep?
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead.
Usually you, you want to keep about 100 feet away.
Okay.
And that's just, that's just general engineering terms and design criteria. The, the real idea behind spacing of driveways from signalized intersections is that you want to be able to provide a safe manner for vehicles to be able to turn in and out of that driveway without being impacted by other intersections, downstream intersections. In this case, it's a signal. So that a signal, what happens is that it's, it's a red light going northbound and cars are going to stack up. That's happening today and with future development along the corridor, that's going to continue to happen. It's just a matter of at this point, what is going to be a safer way to be able to get customers and trucks and any kind of visitors in and out of the site? I think that, you know, as far as the placement of that driveway, that's just a simple, you know, shifting to the north a little bit. As far as, you know, maybe if we even close, if we, let's put it this way, if the decision is to close that existing internal driveway and open up the one that they previously had shown, which is deeper into the site, then you don't need to worry about the location of this driveway because there won't be that interaction. Does that, do you follow that?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
So if we are able to do that, what does that mean? Absolutely right that trucks are not going to be able to circulate as freely, freely through the site to be able to get to the underground tanks. It's going to result in a whole redevelopment of the site, which I'm sure that the applicant and the team does not want to do. So it's just really trying to figure out what's the safest way to be able to get customers and the tanker trucks to be able to enter, circulate, and exit the site.
I would just share that it's pretty troubling testimony to hear.
Yeah. It makes me feel pretty good.
And I appreciate the respect and, you know, that he's giving the applicant's team, but when you start talking about safety, I'm certainly not going to hear that. Concerns me deeply. Safety and vehicular safety on corridor that, you know, has been targeted for development is being developed. Obviously this has a lot of, this plan to me looks like it has a lot of merits and has a, has a lot of things that I think would be successful there, but safety is still a pretty big concern.
Yeah.
And that you're talking about a lot of trips in and out too. I don't know if the applicant wants to, Mr. Chair, do you want the applicant to put the comments out during the hearing then?
Sure. Yeah. Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. For the record, my name is Timothy Letton. I work with Creamon Peterson and I am a licensed engineer and we certainly appreciate Mr. Ford and VHB's attentive review of, you know, the documents that we've put forth. I know, Jason, you've reviewed our stuff fairly quickly and we've turned that around as well. Really happy that we're down to just those real two comments that are left. The first of which, you know, VHB discusses coordinating with the town engineer as far as the Do Not Block Intersection striping. I would just say we'd be more than happy to do so. That's, I think that's an easy one, no brainer. As far as Continental Drive goes, I'm going to walk up to the board because I think I can kind of help the board to, to understand what some of the discussion was about eastern, western connection points and things like that. So the previous rendition.
Is there a way that you can do that so Mr. Ford can see it? Is that, can you see?
Or can the, can the backroom split the?
Is he able to see this because it would be helpful?
That would be a question for Exeter.
They can have the dialogue while we're here. He sees what you're saying, you know what I mean?
Sure.
I don't know if he can.
Well, if they put the camera on site plan, maybe, you know, right on the presenter.
That does work.
See it? Okay, great.
Let us know if you lose it, Jason. So basically there used to be a connection here as well as a connection here, right? To what we are calling the eastern and western driveway connections. So what we've done is we have shown the closure of this western piece while maintaining this eastern connection. So, you know, first off, I think the board understands and acknowledges that these internal site connections are extremely advantageous. They help to control access along the corridor and funnel it through kind of single points of access, which, you know, I think the board understands and would agree with, that's an advantageous approach. The reason why we feel the easternmost versus the westernmost is more advantageous for this site is not necessarily because it accommodates our site better or our site traffic better. We feel that it's a safer location. In this area here, you're going to have a lot of turning vehicles, right? Typically a vehicle that's making a right-hand turn makes a turn no greater than 15 miles an hour, left-hand turn no greater than nine miles an hour. So this is a very slow traffic area. It's an area where you're entering a site with a lot going on. You've got a large gas canopy here, you've got a convenience store, you've got a gas station, you've got a car wash. There's a lot going on, there's a lot for the driver to understand there, they're going to be going slow, right? And I think that's a natural reaction, that's how we want the drivers to react. It's kind of typical traffic calming, right? You think about how do you slow a driver down, right? You make them feel a little bit uncomfortable and they, they slow down. I mean, it's, it's the nature of it. The other piece is, there's, there's still a whole lot going on in this area of the site as well. You know, you have an exit from the car wash, you have an exit from the drive-through, you have folks kind of backing out, turning around, trying to enter pumps, come out of pumps. It feels like this is a more logical and expected place for that type of, that type of maneuver. So that's, that's our thoughts on it. Jason, I don't know if you want to respond to that or if the board would like to hear Jason's thoughts on that.
I'd like to make a comment first.
Sure.
Meanwhile, back at the ranch, excuse me, back at the, what's the name of the bar that's there now? The brewery.
Stop.
People are going to be using that same exit to get there. So you've got more entering traffic that has nothing to do with your business because their, their business is to fill up, fill their tummies up rather than their gas tank. So I'm, and I don't know how much that's been figured into the whole scheme of things. It's, again, it's a safety concern. Slow or fast, I mean, maybe, well, even horses might get in a problem.
Sure.
There's a lot of stuff going on there at different times for different reasons. People get excited when their reason is, is not recognized by other people because they don't have the patience. I'm just, I'm just, it looks like a stew pot or something there. I'm not sure what really concerns me.
Sure. So, you know, certainly it is a shared access driveway. Folks from the abutting parcel certainly would be able to use that. They do have a large full access driveway that still remains. My guess would be if this does become a stir pot, folks are, folks are going to avoid it, right? We've got an alternative access point here, they have an alternative access point there. I think that will self-regulate in a lot of ways.
That's, that happens too, yeah.
The, the other piece to consider here is this abutting parcel does, does have, you know, some truck traffic. So this easterly connection point does accommodate those trucks a lot easier than bringing them into the site.
Excuse me. Could you please comment on Mr. Ford's suggestion about moving the intersection north slightly so that the exit arrows line up in the right, the arrows aren't doing this? This is, that's what's freaking me out.
To be fully transparent, we would be more than happy to do that, but it just does not feel like the right thing for us to do. But if the board, if it pleases the board, we'd be more than happy to push that driveway a bit north. What we've looked at is basically aligning the curb line with the edge of the canopy, which would align the in and the out almost perfectly. Reason why we don't want to do that is one, it pushes that driveway closer to the intersection and that just never feels like the right thing to do. You know, we, we develop these corner lots, we work with developers on these corner lots to put in gas stations, you know, I don't want to say all the time, but, you know, Chris does it every day for sure and the traffic engineers in my office do as well. The one thing we always try and do is get our driveways as far away from the intersection as possible. It's just good engineering, good traffic engineering practice. Again, if you'd like us to scooch it up, I think it's 10 feet, 11 feet, we'd be more than happy to do that. We've looked at it, there is a utility pole in this location, but we think we can do it without relocating the utility pole and if we have to, we will.
Mr. Chairman, if you, if you don't mind me asking a question of the applicant?
Yes.
Or of Mr. Letton. So Tim, if, if the concern is moving that driveway further to the north a little bit and entering cars going into, let's say, a car fueling at that southernmost fueling position, would it then be safer to remove that fueling position from the site plan?
Yeah, no, I don't think that that is a concern, Jason. It's, it's more, again, just shifting that driveway to the north just doesn't feel like the right thing to do. Again, I'm, I'm here representing that we're willing to do that if, if that were to please the board. The, the other, the other point that Mr. Ford made was about kind of the queues for the left turn lane here as well as the through lane in this area and if and when they will extend beyond our site driveway. The analysis has shown that yes, the left, no, the left turn lane does not queue back past our, our proposed driveway, but the through lane would, right? So we've shown that that will happen twice a day during the peak hour. So at two instances through the entire day, that, that drive, that through lane will back up past the intersection, past our driveway. It's a 90-second cycle for the signal here, so worst-case scenario, that would clear within a minute, minute and a half. But it would, the reason why it would be queued up would probably because it's in a, the worst place in the cycle. In other words, it would, it would probably clear up almost instantly. I mean, we're talking about 95 percentile queues, so it's 95% of the time the queue is shorter than our driveway. I just wanted to make sure that that was, that was understood. We're not talking about a continuous line of traffic past our driveway.
So I would like to ask you a question on that. With your study, what level of growth were you getting into on the corridor? Because it looks like there's a lot coming down the line.
Sure. So, you know, what, what we did is, is we took a look at the April, I think it's April or maybe March of 2020, 2020 traffic counts that were done from the VHB corridor study for this location. We then brought those forward to 2021. We didn't grow those numbers because of the COVID-19 pandemic and we said those, the 2020 volumes will be representative of the 2021 volumes. We then talked to the, the town, understood what they had for planned developments in the area and if you'd like, I could talk through what we included, but I would need to refer to my notes for that. But there were, you know, call it three or four developments that we included background traffic growth from, right? And then we also talked to the regional planning commission and included a half percent per year. So with all that, we brought these up to 2030 traffic volumes. So there's, I would say there's quite a bit of growth in here.
Yeah. And just for the record, if you don't mind, I'm, I'm in support of their traffic volume growths, their base conditions and their future traffic volume conditions.
So it, so the, so the question that we're talking about right now that I'm hearing is, is it safer to be closer to the light or not?
Yeah.
Right? Is that the crux of this entry question?
Yeah.
And you're flexible, is what you're saying?
We're, we're flexible.
If necessary.
We're flexible if necessary. What, you know, what I would say is, there's an engineer from our office who's stamping this plan.
Yeah.
He feels most comfortable with it, farther away from the intersection. I, I would be inclined to leave it that way, but if you'd like us to move it forward, again, it's, you know, I was almost handed a red pen to come up here and draw it on and say, done. We're not, we're not resistant to it. Just my, my gut tells me from an engineering standpoint, it's, it's only 10 feet, it's only 11 feet, whatever it may be, just feels like that 11 feet really isn't that important when it comes to an offset here. I think as you drive this, you won't even notice that offset.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Will it matter? Does it matter, like, being closer? Because I know, that's what I always say, close, far away from the intersection, right? But the closer you're in the intersection, left turns a concern? If you remove left turns, isn't there not as much of a concern the closer you are to the intersection? Because then you're not crossing that left-hand turn lane into Continental?
That is true, but we are here hoping that, you know, left turns will not be restricted out of this driveway.
And can I ask you why that is? I mean, you have, your customers can go to the light, safely take a left, but you're sending them to also a level of service D during the peak hour, and I've been out there many times. Why, why, can I ask you what the thinking is to provide that?
Sure. I don't believe there's any other major development along the corridor that does have the restrictions. As we look at the corridor study that's been undertaken by the town, there's basically two options that have been put forth on the table, a midterm and a long-term, right? The midterm would be, like Mr. Plourd said, a two-way left turn lane down the middle of the road, which I think would be pretty advantageous for left turns, because it gives them kind of a refuge. That's, that's part of the two-way left turn. The long-term was a median down the middle of Route 27, Epping Road. The study concluded that there was not going to be enough development nor enough funding to put in that, that median. But I would say if at some point in time that median were to come along, obviously that restricts access to all developments along the corridor. You know, from, from our standpoint, Mr. Sharples, we feel like left turns can be accommodated through this driveway. They feel like, we feel like they can be accommodated safely. There's plenty of site distance. If, if a vehicle chooses to make a left into a long queue of traffic versus going out through the light, which I would probably do, that's, that's a choice we want to be able to give to the customers of this site.
Yeah. I just have always, you know, as a layperson, I've always found that that's when accidents happen and the crash date is like, when they wait for a minute and a half, they're not on a light, so they don't have any expectation of, of getting in anytime soon, and they pass up some early opportunities and then end up taking a gap that's smaller than the opportunities they passed up in the first 30 seconds, because they've waited for 90 seconds.
Sure.
And that's when it becomes unsafe, and that doesn't happen at a light.
I've seen that quite a bit in my career as well. The, the difference here is, this is a signalized intersection. Typically, where you see vehicles taking a shorter gap would be when there's an unsignalized intersection up ahead. With a signalized intersection, you're going to get gaps in the traffic that the traffic signal provides for you through the oncoming traffic.
Yeah, it's so close. It seems like you, they back up, so then you got a wall, then it goes green, and then the people from the south come by. So where is that guy?
But there is all red time at the signal and, you know.
That's, yeah.
The, the other thing I would just add is, you know, we do need that left turn to get our fuel trucks out of the site, which is a very important piece. They come in, we, we believe most of the fuel trucks are going to come from 101, so they come in, they make a right in, they circulate around, and they need to make a left to get out of there. The, the other option would be sending them back through town, which I don't believe you folks would like either.
Or down Continental. There's a, there's a huge-
Turnaround?
-sack at the bottom at the end of Continental.
I'm, I'm being told they can't make that movement.
They can't go onto Continental?
Uh, they can't make that turnaround, is what I'm being told.
The one at the end of Continental?
I'm, I'm not familiar with it.
Oh, no, they can, yeah. There's major industry down there, they can make it.
They're saying they can't make this left turn.
Okay, that, okay.
I apologize.
Could they use the exit at Al's Automotive, the really wide curve cut, just next door?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's kind of, that's kind of one of the, the whole points of why we believe we should have a left turn here, is even if you make this right only, all people are going to do is just come out at Al's and make the left anyways.
Well, that'll be something that, and then Al's will, the property owner will have to deal with.
Right.
I mean, they're in control of that, and they could stop that if they so choose.
We can't restrict that project.
No.
You know, to, to be, to be honest with the board, it just feels like eliminating this left turn is an unnecessary hardship on the development. There's no one else along the corridor who has that restriction. We, we've proven that we have the site distance for that turn to be able to be, to be made. Again, with the upstream traffic signal, there will be gaps in the platoons of traffic that come through that allow that left turn to be made safely, and it's important, it's an, an important maneuver for our tanker trucks.
Yeah, we haven't restricted it, but you're the only one on that entire corridor that has the benefit of accessing a light for a left-hand turn. So eliminating, you, you have acts, left-hand turn access out of Continental on a lighted intersection. No one else has that. So when you say everyone else, you're different. This, this site is different.
Sure.
Is there a way to allow, I mean, I'm just spitballing David, is there a way to allow trucks servicing the facility to take the left and not general public?
It's a good question.
I mean-
Because they just could-
You can probably sign it, but people won't obey it.
Yeah.
Right. It becomes an enforcement issue.
Yeah. When you want to restrict left turns, you don't design it to allow left turns, because people will just do it. Yeah, the sign, the little arrow sign doesn't, doesn't really do it.
I don't know, it's working on my, in my way. People are doing stuff that they're being told to do, for the most part. I mean-
Well, I mean, it prevents a lot of people.
Yeah.
Uh, but what I'm saying is it won't prevent it completely.
Right.
That's all I was saying.
Right.
It will discourage it.
Well, one way don't prevent everybody either, so.
No, good point.
This is an interesting quandary.
You know, the other piece to consider here is, today, this is all just wide-open pavement, right? So we are proposing this pretty large island, which really helps to delineate and define that-
Yeah.
-that driveway.
We noticed that on the sidewalk.
Right. I, I think it will be an excellent improvement for the area.
It'll start bringing definition to it.
Right.
No, that was great, yeah, I appreciate that. I mean, the TRC wanted that. Originally, it wasn't planned, it was just an intersection without kind of any, and then, that was, that was very much appreciated. I just want to want another question about the not moving it to the north. And you said people will come in and there's a lot going on, so they'll slow down. I'm kind of concerned about people coming around and slowing down because they're concerned, and then two or three cars, you're backed up into Epping Road. And now you've got an issue with Epping Road, because I-
You're staying here.
That's my major concern is like, you know, yeah, your internal design can, you know, you can work with that, or, you know, it's kind of your issue, but when it affects the public right away. So when you say that, do you see that as a possibility?
No, we, we do not. It's, we have enough room here, even if we had to, to stack two cars.
Okay.
But I, I can't imagine, I mean, I envision cars rolling through here. I don't envision them coming up and stopping and saying, where do I go?
Thank you.
Yeah, they should be looking towards where they're headed rather than-
Right.
-just at the hood of the car. But it's the getting out again. It's the getting out is the problem, at least as far as I'm concerned. And I'm, it's, it's, you're almost damned if you do and damned if you don't, if you'll, pardon my- It, it just seems to me that, I drove out there today, and I just, and try, I didn't shut my eyes, but I tried to envision what this was going to be with a series of- Pardon? Good point. I'm glad you kept your eyes open. But envision a series of cars attempting to get out of that spot, which is not now defined, other than the existing getting out from the brewery. It, it just, I, I, the in and out by the trucks, I can see that, is the individual cars that trouble me, because maybe everybody's not quite as, as conscious of their neighbor, and they, we do have something called road rage occasionally, and God forbid that we would have something, but you don't know. As I say, I'm, it's the left-hand turn that bothers me, and I appreciate the need for it, but it's still, I have to tell you, as a member of the board, I'm troubled. I'm not even sure that problem is solved by moving the drive, uh, moving the driveway. That's the other part. You still have to make that left-hand turn. The, you're saying, well, the light is going to open up. Well, the, the light controls the westbound, or southbound.
Southbound.
That's where the opening is. I'm troubled as how you get an opening with a through lane controlled by a light. Where does that, where is that-
I think, I think the reality will be, the left turn lane will not be blocked.
Right.
This will provide a gap for southbound traffic. If I've been sitting here for a minute, I'm going to say, hey, let me sneak halfway. I'm going to sit in the left turn lane, use that for refuge, and then get into the right turn lane as that queue clears. That, that's probably the reality of it. But I'll, I'll say this, right? I think the major concern of the board is left turns out of the site during peak hours, right? What we're looking at here is a 24-hour driveway, and that's the big thing for us. We do, we're not sitting here trying to promote our customers to make a left turn out of this site in the middle of rush hour. Our expectation is that that's going to self-meter, that it's going to meter itself. If somebody knows, boy, it's a real nightmare getting out of there, they're going to, they're going to come out through Continental Drive. That's what's going to happen during the peak hours. You're going to see the majority of folks making that left during that peak hour. But off-peak hours, I did it earlier tonight, it's going to be fine to make a left out of there. It's going to be safe to make a left out of there. Again, I'd, I'd kind of bring it to the board's attention that from a safety standpoint, I think we have the basis covered. We have this, we have the site distance, we have the room to be able to accommodate a vehicle. Our analysis shows that, yes, it's going to be a long delay, but it can happen, and it will, and, you know, it, it will happen. The other piece is, again, like we've discussed, if that is restricted, what you're going to see is folks just doing that who want to make that left turn.
Yeah.
And that, that's who's going to use this anyways, is the people who want to make that left turn.
Mr. Chair, can I ask Mr. Letton a question?
Certainly.
So, Tim, I'm, I'm trying to come up with a scenario in order to allow the left turns out, okay? So, I'm trying to work with you on this, so I, I don't want you to think that I'm coming at you, because I'm not. The existing northbound left turn lane, I think that in the traffic study, it said that it was over 300 feet long striped. Is there a way to be, is there a way to be able to almost like shorten that left turn lane? And so that from the site going to the south, it's almost like a center turn lane, kind of converted into a center turn lane, to be able to allow left turns to turn out of the site, to be able to sit in the middle in that striped center turn lane, instead of sitting in a, an exclusive left turn lane?
It's a good suggestion, Jay. I don't know if the board followed that, or if you'd like me to run through it with the visual?
Run it again.
Visual, yeah.
So, so what he's saying is, hey, look, you've got a 300-foot left turn lane here, right?
Yeah.
Our analysis is showing, I don't have the numbers with me, they're over there, somewhere around a 200-foot queue, which probably would give us the ability to turn this section into a two-way left turn lane, which would allow the maneuver that I described to be a real legal maneuver, where you can pull into that left turn lane for refuge. What we would need to look at is the width of this turn lane, because typically a two-way left turn lane is wider. The awkward part of the two-way left turn lane here is there's nothing for the opposite lane to turn into. So, you know, it kind of, it kind of helps, it helps with giving us a refuge, but I would say from a traffic engineering and probably a general public standpoint, I think that just might be a real head-scratcher.
So I think the challenge for us is we have staff objecting to a left turn. We have a third-party peer review objecting to a left turn. And so as a planning board, I don't feel like I have the expertise to go against that, to be frank with you. So, you know, I mean, that's, it puts us in a challenging position. I am not a traffic agent.
Sure.
I don't play one at night, I didn't stay at a hotel.
I don't take anybody, I don't take anybody for a-
Holiday Inn Express.
Yeah.
Right.
So, and I'm not trying to give you guys a hard time, it's just if something ever happened-
Right, to figure out.
And I approved it, I'd lose sleep over that.
We appreciate the conversation and the candor.
Yeah. I mean, it's just, it's not my field.
Right.
And we're in a challenging position here, because we're being, we, we rely on other people. We make decisions based on what they're providing us. And I certainly don't think you'd be here saying it's fine if you didn't feel it was fine either. So trust me, I appreciate that also.
Right.
But it really puts us in a challenge, and I, is there, is there a middle ground for that? Is there something you guys can come up with?
What if we were to post a sign that said no left turns, and we picked some peak hours?
What do you think, Mr. Plourd and Matt?
I think that it's, it's a step in the right direction. I, I think that it, you know, there's two issues, right? It's the left turns out in that internal decision point coming in off of Epping Road. The, the no-left turn out during certain restricted hours, it's going to be an enforcement thing, right? I mean, it's the same thing as if we put in a delta island in the driveway to force or encourage right turn in, right turn out. People might still turn left out of a driveway that has that delta island in there. It's all about enforcement. I think that some people, like, for example, whenever I'm doing a traffic study, or I'm looking to do some kind of improvements, or a design, or operations of an intersection, I always look at it from the perspective of my mother driving, who's a little bit slower behind the wheel, to my daughter when she first got her license. Not for me driving, because I'm more comfortable driving, I'm more familiar with the roads, I can get my way around, but those two extremes, those are the types of drivers that we're, we're also including within these different types of designs. That type of signage would certainly discourage my mother and my daughter from turning left out, even if it is during those peak hours that are listed there. However, someone like me might say, there's nobody coming, I'm going to turn left out anyway, or I'm going to take it into my own hands. It's all about the enforcement. So that, that's really what it comes down to, is the enforcement of any type of restriction. And, and so, I think that it's going in the right direction. To be able to, kind of, I guess I'm going against you, Tim, a little bit, as far as that center turn lane being striped out there. Yes, they are for left turns along the main line to go in either direction. They're also to be able to make two-stage left turn maneuvers. So I would feel much safer for someone that would be able to turn left out of the driveway to be able to sit in a striped median area, as opposed to sitting there in a striped left turn area that's meant for Continental Drive. So, there are multiple reasons for having a center turn lane, other than just the main line left turns. It's also to be able to do, to help provide a refuge area for vehicles turning left from a side street or a driveway, to make that two-stage left turn maneuver. So, I would feel, honestly, I would feel more comfortable with that type of a design, because then it's, it's going to be striped that way, it's going to be able to accommodate any vehicles, any motorists that's going to say, well, nobody's looking, I'm still going to turn left, even if they have that time restriction out there. I don't know what the cross-section is out there, Tim, off the top of my head, as far as the curb-to-curb. I, I don't know if it would need restriping, I don't know if the left-turn lane is wide enough to be able to accommodate a center turn lane. I don't know that information. But I think that I would, I would definitely feel more comfortable if we are talking about allowing the left turns out of the shared driveway onto Epping Road northbound, about contemplating and considering and looking into that center turn lane, at least from, you know, a little bit north of the driveway going south, because that also helps out the Al's, I always want to say Al's Toy Barn, as you can tell from Toy Story, but Al's Automotive and Truck Service Center. So, I think that that helps, because especially when you're talking about trucks. You know, trucks take a little bit of time to get going, you know, to get up to, to the, the travel speed, to be able to make that maneuver. It's, it's a safe, it's a safer, I don't want to say safe, because safe is really subjective to, you know, depending on who you're talking to. But it's a safer area for vehicles who are trying to turn left out of any of those driveways to be- to be able to go northbound on Epping Road.
The, the other thing we need to consider here is, I'll say as a group, right, is that these plans, they don't need to get approved by DOT, but they need to go to DOT and DOT is going to comment on these. We don't need a DOT permit, so the town of Epping does have ultimate control and say over this, DOT gets a look because state funding was at one point used to construct Route 27. Showing a two-way left turn lane with no other left turn, I think, would get shot down at the District 6 level of DOT. And I think would come back with, with quite a bit of, you know, discussion for the town and probably would cause us all more heartache than it, than it helps us with. And Jason, trust me, I love that you're throwing this out here as an option for us. It's an easy option. It just, you know, it just, it just doesn't feel right if, if, if I'm being candid with the board.
Okay, then restrict left turns out. I guess that's where we're at.
What if, what if we restricted left turns for trucks only? And we did it through a scored concrete island here that trucks could mount over?
You mean allow left-hand turns for trucks?
Yeah. I'm sorry, allow, allow left-hands trucks only.
I'm totally not that. I'm just saying where I'm.
I mean, that's usually, I mean, they don't go when it's busy, right? Usually they don't pull in when it, when it's rush hour, they come early in the morning or something, fill up the tanks and leave. So that, that doesn't seem, yeah.
I think that's kind of the ultimate compromise here.
Yeah, I don't know how we didn't force that, but what is that?
So it's a, it's a scored concrete, it's very uncomfortable to drive on. Think about like a rumble strip on a highway, but more aggressive. So if, if you're a vehicle and you're on it, you, you know you're on it and you're getting off.
Then how do you sign, I mean, I can see just like the circle, no left turn, you know? How do you say trucks only?
I don't think you do. I think the island speaks for itself.
Okay. So are you going to have a sign that says no left turn?
We, we can. I've seen it that way before where you put that right in the concrete.
But the trucks are okay.
Yeah. We could put a sign that says, you know, no left turn except trucks or something like that.
That's kind of like roundabouts, small roundabouts.
Yeah, exactly.
A wide shoulder there and guess what, four.
Yeah, the truck apron on the roundabout, very, very similar to that. These are rougher than the, than the truck apron on a roundabout. And they are slightly raised as well, slightly. It still needs to be plowable, no curb.
It's aggressive raised, right?
It's, it's slightly raised, three-quarters of an inch or something like that, but it's, it's a wavy, wavy finish on it.
Is it a problem for plows?
No, they're plowable.
That's what you're saying, it needs to be plowable.
Jason, does that sound? What are you thinking?
It's definitely, it's definitely in the right direction, you know? I think that if we can sign it, if we can, you know, whatever that signage is that can be agreeable, you know, to Paul Lassich, I mean, that's, that's really what it's about. As far as the scored concrete, that is used. That, that definitely is a good idea. So I think that that's definitely going in the right direction. I'm still concerned about that internal intersection, but as far as the left turns out, I think that, that, that definitely can be helpful if it's only going to be for trucks because they do their deliveries off commuter peak time period. So that, that's good, that's a positive thing. You know, the trucks don't want to be there while the facility is going to be jam-packed, whether it's from the Dunkin' Donuts or it's from vehicles at the pump stations. They want to be able to circulate within the site without having any kind of conflict. So I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I think what we do is we just, we go with moving the driveway farther to the north, we add the scored concrete island and hopefully that's the compromise that everybody's comfortable with here.
I think that's good.
I think that's a definite improvement.
That seems to make some sense.
For non-engineer.
Yeah, for non-engineer.
Us common folk.
I mean, that, that would, would be, I guess viscerally, at least for one person, this would be, be better. And what we're trying to do is get you with what you need and what we need also, just goes to your concern, Aaron, is that we do have a responsibility, which does cause.
Signed up for it.
Yeah, but we did sign up for it?
Oh, yes.
We did, all right. But I, to me, I think that would certainly help my concern. It's just one individual member of the board.
Sure. I think the applicant wants the left turn to accommodate servicing the facility for their trucks.
Which makes sense.
Not really, if, if you didn't have that challenge, my guess is we wouldn't still be discussing the left turn. Because I don't think your concern really is the customer. And I'm not trying to say you don't care what your customer is trying to say, that's not the challenge. They have ways that, and they have ways that are probably more conducive to what they're going to do. I think you're right about that. I don't think it's going to be that, everybody's doing it anyway. So I don't think restricting that for you and your customers is going to hurt the business at all. But I think allowing it for the trucks is going to allow the facility to function.
Yeah.
So to me, it makes a lot of sense that, that compromise. And then I guess the question is, do we think it's going to be adhered to? But I, I don't know. I mean, to me, when I'm seeing some such changes, that one that we, I talked to Dave about a bit, 111A and 27 that changed recently and not everybody loves it in town, but I see it function pretty well. That altered intersection, when you go down a couple times a day, probably, it seems like it's functioning pretty well to me. And if you go down Dogtown where, up 118 into Dogtown, they switched the stop sign there around a pole.
Yes.
People are going around that pole now.
They do, yeah.
And I haven't seen anybody pulled over for it. So I don't think, and it's a real enforcement area for the town, but people are doing it what they're being instructed to do, at least with a reason. And if I think if it did become an issue, then we, the police would be notified that this is happening, I would think.
Yeah, and if I may, you know, we have proposed these rumble strips throughout New England. We, I, I just did personally one down in Connecticut on, down in East Granby a couple years ago. We did one over in Brunswick, Maine and Wells, Maine. They both have the same type of thing. And it is, it's an uncomfortable movement for, for a passenger car, but it provides the ability for the tanker truck to get out of the site. And that's always a challenge with these gas station developments, is getting the truck, you can get the truck in, but you have to get it out at some point. And we need to make the left-hand turn out of this site for the truck. So we do hope that this appeases Jason, provides comfort for the board, enough so that we could potentially get a conditional approval this evening.
You remember rumble strip?
Oh, sure.
How many times a week does a truck arrive?
Depends on all the.
The volume of your.
If everyone on the board goes to fill up there or if it's just half the board. No, but it really depends.
Yeah.
Pat McLaughlin with Norrea Energy, it really depends on how much volume the site does. Some sites get deliveries once a week, some sites get deliveries more than once a week. But we, we control our delivery schedule so that it is off-peak, but they got to get in and out.
The other thought is that, oh, I'm sorry. When, when, if you exit, go down Epping Road and then, I mean, it's out of the way, but if you go onto Industrial Drive, you can make a circle there without doing any awkward maneuverings in a parking area or, I mean, there is, there is like a half-moon shaped area that you could go into and then come back out on Epping Road and head to the highway. So I guess if, you know, if you could let your drivers know that, then there's an alternative if they're not comfortable taking a left onto Epping Road. They're aware of that other loop that they could go.
You know, similar to what Tim had said about, you know, customers, you know, feeling uncomfortable or comfortable, which way they're going to go. The tanker truck, you know, if ultimately they feel it's, it's in their ability to go right and safely get, you know, get off the road, not go over somebody's property and get back to the highway, that's what they're going to do. But being as that it isn't off-peak hours, the truck volumes are lower, the majority of the time, they're going to be able to take that left-hand turn with no conflict, with no, no concern over safety.
It's good to have alternatives.
Yeah, I just, I just want to, I think the, with the change in the grade and appearance, it's probably going to deter the people we don't want taking lifts to go onto 27, as long as the signage is there and it looks a lot different and uncomfortable, I think it'll do its job.
Thank you, Larry.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make a correction about something. I'm not opposed to this, this rumble strip, the granulated pavement or anything like that, but there was a statement that was made a little while ago about that New Hampshire DOT would not approve a center turn lane just for one direction coming out of a driveway that turns into a left turn lane. Mr. Tamular and I actually worked on a project up in Woodsville, New Hampshire, on Route 302 that New Hampshire DOT had actually required us to put in. So this is a very similar situation, so I just want to make sure that I corrected something that Mr. Letton had said.
I stand corrected. Thank you, Jason.
Is that something we should still look into?
I think that in the future, I think that that would be a good idea as far as like once, you know, more development occurs along the corridor. And if, if, you know, based on different feedback that the town is getting, that cars, not trucks, but cars are actually turning left out of that driveway, that'd need to be something you want to consider as a planning board.
But I would think, Jason, from your perspective, prohibiting regular vehicles from using it would be a better solution at this stage.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Good. Any other? Well, we should, yes. Okay, that's good. Let me open up the public. If there's anybody that would like to speak to this, about this, please step to the microphone and introduce yourself. And those people at home, but I don't see anybody on the screen here.
I'd like to weigh in now if I could.
Please.
I couldn't before because I'm an alternate. Can I ask for clarification? Just a few minutes ago when Gwen made the comment about the other road that you could actually take and go around, did you think that was private property? Okay, because it was that the truck wouldn't go, take a route that would go on private property. Because that is a public road, correct?
Yeah, absolutely, that's a public right-of-way. I think, I think the statement we made earlier is, we don't believe the truck can make this left turn.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, Continental. So if they, if they, if the truck cannot take a left turn leaving, you're, you're fueling truck. There is a road, just down Epping Road heading into town that you can use to go back on the highway without going through town or too far out of your driver's way.
And you designed that access, so you could design it so a truck could take a left-hand turn, correct? I'm just curious.
Possibly, but what that would probably do is make the driveway wider.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I don't see any issue with moving that driveway wider to the, you know, to the end of Continental. I was just curious because I was like, well, they can't take that left turn. I was like, well, you could design it a little bit wider and they could.
Right. I'm just as concerned too about liability. Can we really say, put a sign up that says only trucks? So that means if a tractor trailer, not one of their fueler trucks is there, and I'm really asking this because I'm trying to understand the logistics here. If it says trucks only can take a left-hand turn, that means any tractor trailer that's there fueling up in that intersection, right? At the light. So I'm, I'm very concerned about the safety of this.
If I may clarify, what we're actually proposing is to say a no-left turn period. We're not, we're not proposing any signs that says left-hand turns only for trucks. It's a sign that says no-left-hand turns.
So here we are.
And the vehicle, and the tractor trailer will know based on, you know, the, the delivery of their, of the fueling, that they will be able to take a left-hand turn during off-peak hours.
That doesn't seem legal to me.
It's a very, it's a very common thing that happens in gas station developments.
Okay, I won't, it just doesn't seem like a legal thing. And if there's an accident, there's a culpability there. Gas, as long as the town isn't, I hope no one gets hurt. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nusri.
If you can speak.
No, I thought you guys.
You can speak anytime.
You can speak anytime.
I've been sitting here like.
We've told you this numerous times.
No, you haven't.
Except during deliberations when you close the public hearing.
No, I was waiting for the public hearing to open. So, okay. So you know what, I do have one more.
No, be quiet, sorry.
So there was a comment about pulling in and out, that what, a lot of us seem to have concerns about that area. And there was a nine mile an hour and a 15 mile an hour. So is that taking into consideration people who want to rush the light, the oncoming traffic and things like that? I guess I'm a little concerned about your averages. So you're saying that no one's going to really pull in there unless they're going 90 miles an hour if they're trying to beat, like, the light and people coming through it?
It's kind of a funny saying, right? But you can't design for stupid. So in, in a lot of ways, the engineering, the traffic engineering practice has these standards that they work within. And the nine miles an hour and the 15 miles an hour, what that comes from is it comes from studies that were done by measuring speed of how fast people are making left-hand turns and how fast they're making right-hand turns. I believe the stat is, it may be incorrect, it's in one of our responses to comments, I believe the stat is, it was measured that 95% of people make the turns at that or slower speed. So there's, there's always that, you know, that outlying 5%, but you, you know, you can't put Styrofoam on every corner of every building.
Yeah, that's not my point, but thank you for clarifying.
Sure.
Okay.
Any other? I don't see anybody from public out of the room. Any other public wish to speak? Okay. So I bring it back to the board? Okay, any other questions we have?
I just have, and it's not for this intersection, intersection, it's for the Continental Drive intersection. Is that the do-not-block, do-not-block sign? Is that, that's, that's on the pavement itself?
There is an actual freestanding sign. There's a sign as well as a pavement markings as well.
Okay, I was thinking in the wintertime, that's not going to be visible probably, so you have signage that goes there.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
There's signage on Port Saffab before you get to McDonald's. I'm not sure what the street is on the last.
Oh, for the house.
Highland Street, something like that?
Yeah, yeah.
Allen.
And again, most people, when there's that many cars, recognize it, some don't. But it's, it's black and white signage. Anything else that we have questions about, Jen? Want to make sure you.
I appreciate the applicant's willingness to respond about the trees, the shade trees along the street. I think that, that's great. And the additional, the widened planting to accommodate the 10 feet. I mean, I guess I just have to say, like, I feel like we've made a lot of changes tonight and I would like to see those plants on the plan. I, I personally wouldn't feel comfortable voting on doing a conditional approval tonight, I guess, without seeing all the updates together.
If I, if I may, just respond, if I may, Mr. Chairman. I mean, the changes that we're looking at doing is taking the eight-foot landscape strip that's in front and making it 10 feet, so we're moving that two feet. And we're basically talking about adding a couple of trees to the plan and making the minor adjustments to the, to the driveway intersection. That's the only changes that we're, that we're proposing. And then adding the, the, a no-left-turn sign, which is just a freestanding, you know, sign.
So far, because I don't think the board has talked about a sidewalk.
Sidewalks, the sidewalk, yeah.
I, I think that will, you know, if that's it, then, I mean, you can't, I don't think, knock over the flag.
Yeah, I think, you know, since Dave mentioned that, just, I would definitely be supportive of a sidewalk. I think that the, the idea that the road may change in the future, I mean, there's, there's a lot of space. It doesn't have to be way out at the pavement. It can be, you know, closer into the property line to prevent any sort of like future encroachment on the sidewalk or having to move it. But yeah, I think it's, you know, I, I feel like this is, you know, one of the first, you know, it's the first thing you see when you're on Epping Road as you're entering town. And I think we need to really set an example for good landscaping, good design, good pedestrian connectivity. It's got to have a sidewalk.
Would it, would it be applicable to work all these minor details out with staff if we agree that we'll, we'll put in the sidewalk? We can work with the engineering department, we can work with, you know, the, the planning department in order to get a conditional approval? I hate, I hate to harp on the conditional.
State requirements, like when you do conditional approval, they shouldn't have any discretion. It should be pretty obvious what they are and the extent of these plan changes, if they want a sidewalk and so forth and where that goes and plan, I, I think go beyond. go beyond. I mean, I, I don't feel comfortable with.
Really? You don't?
No.
And we're not.
I mean, I, I am the, like, you.
No.
The board knows me. I like to move things through the, I do not want to have extra meetings. And I think a couple of people there know, who know me, I'm not looking to leave. I'm not looking to do that. But that, you know, I don't know, I haven't heard the discussion.
He's a salary guy, not an hourly guy.
I don't know.
Doesn't want more meetings than necessary. That is true. I agree.
So, so, I mean, I'm not, you know, like I've said before, you know, you can add a couple of trees to a plan. Okay, three deciduous, you know, but you're moving an intersection.
Yeah.
You're, you're altering an intersection, you're adding things, you're adding left turn. I mean, the combination, potential sidewalk, where would it go? How would it be designed? How would it tie into the Continental intersection? I wouldn't feel comfortable without the board seeing those type of things.
And frankly, the applicant, there's no new feedback presented tonight. Everything that we've discussed, they knew before they came here tonight. They could have put sidewalks on. This plan that I'm looking at that I got when I walked in the door already, they knew that that was a concern.
You have a sidewalk.
They could have responded to Mr. Plourd's comments previously with more, you know, so this has been a productive meeting. But if our town planner is uncomfortable.
If that's the changes you're proposing, then I, I don't, I don't believe.
I think, I mean, we probably need to discuss that further as a board.
Yeah.
We're making assumptions here that these are required. This is still an open discussion.
Well, I, I agree with Jen. We need, I'd like to see where those trees are because this, again, we, we talk about the gateway to Exeter. And the front without any trees looks naked, and it's not, not a good impression. I mean.
I don't think the trees are the issue.
No, not completely.
I'm not going to make them come back to show us through the tree.
No, but.
It's really going to be the bigger engineering pieces. What do you think? I know what you're saying.
Not completely.
But, okay, I want to feel a picture of a maple. I'll draw you one.
No. I realize it's got to be a tree large enough so the station will be seen behind it.
Yes, exactly.
And it needs to be high enough so it's not going to block your view for traffic.
Right.
Well, you know what? You'd get trees that big planted. So that's why I'm, just what I'm getting. That's all.
I'm teasing you.
I know that. Anybody? Glenn?
I have a, I don't know if Jen, Jen, were you set for the moment?
Yes.
Or do you have other questions?
Oh, sorry, Jen.
I don't want to, I don't want to cut you off there. Is the electric, electric vehicle charging station, is that in a position, is that there for a particular reason? Like, had it ever been thought of as being, had you ever thought of putting it anywhere else? And the reason I'm asking is because I'm looking at the dumpster location. It seems like a precarious place for people who are hauling trash from the building to, they're going to have to cross basically three, three potentially, three lanes of traffic to get to the dumpster. And it seems like, looking at the floor plan, that, that anything that you're taking out to the trash probably doesn't come even from that side of the building. And I don't, I don't, I mean, I, I don't pretend to know how your, how the operation will work. It just, it just seems like the dumpster's in an odd spot, so.
If I may, is, is it okay if I defer that question just for one moment?
Sure.
After Chris, I'm, before we lose sight of a topic that was just being discussed by the board, I'm John Arnold. I'm the attorney who represents the applicant. And I just wanted to address some of the concern about a conditional approval versus working through more details with staff on what the conditions would be as opposed to coming back to this board. And I wanted to just, I guess, point out that in order to get a conditional approval, the conditions themselves do not need to be purely administrative and worked out with the staff. The board can certainly grant a conditional approval and have the applicant come back to the board in order to determine whether or not the conditions have been met. The, the state statutes give staff the discretion to work through purely administrative conditions such as, you know, have state approvals been obtained? Are there, you know, plan notes that have been added and things like that? And with those conditional approvals, the applicant doesn't need to come back to the board. The staff's empowered to work through those. But those aren't the only types of conditional approvals that can be granted. And I just wanted to make the board aware of that because, again, not to beat a dead horse, but there is a, a serious sense of urgency in terms of the, the deal that you have with the property owner and the permit period to get a, a conditional approval this evening. So I'm sorry to defer your, your question, but I just wanted to touch on that before we move on.
Yeah. Thank you.
And to answer the question with regards to the dumpster, the employees, will we would come out the store, the front of the store, they'd walk across the, the front. And then where the loading zone is, there's plenty of area for a safe, safe, a safe passageway through the loading zone and accessing the dumpster. The location of the dumpster, we always try to put the dumpster as far away from the front of the site, so it's not visible. It's fenced, it's screened, we have arboretis all around it. And again, similar to the way the, the tanker truck comes in off-peak hours, the dumpster truck, the dumpster would come in off-peak hours. Although we are showing two lanes back here, one is a bypass lane. It's, they are frequent, they are infrequently used, but it does provide the ability for somebody, if they are in line, to go around. So there is plenty of room to get the dumpster, the dump truck in there, access the dumpster, and then exit out safely.
Jen, you probably would, I'll, I'll let you address this question, but when we were on the sidewalk, you commented about onsite pedestrian safety. And there was talk about some kind of a crosswalk or some area for people to be where they would be safe. I don't remember where that area had been, but do you? Because I don't see anything on the plans that indicates that has been addressed.
Yeah, I don't either. And I think that that's part of the reason why I'd like to see the sidewalk, because I feel like that might help to visualize like how, so the concern that came up on the sidewalk was, you know, in theory, people are going to walk to this site to like grab a soda or whatever. And, or they might be, you know, at Saw Belli and say, oh, I'm going to run over and grab a pack of gum. And here, they're, they're just, you know, they're crossing a lot of traffic. And it would be nice to have a safe pedestrian route, like maybe a crosswalk across the drive-through lanes. There was mention of the, yeah, the island that I think you're drawing right now, having like a pedestrian refuge. I mean, I think once you're there though, then it's like, where do you go?
Right. So, so this is what, obviously, you know, with, with any sidewalk that we propose within the right-of-way, this would be the pedestrian route. We'd have a crosswalk. We'd have a sidewalk along the front here, and then a, a crosswalk across the other drive-through to safely get people into the site. So that's what we would be showing with any revised plans.
Yeah, that's what we talked about.
Yeah, that'd be nice to see.
Yeah.
May I just address that question before? Because I agree with the attorney, what they said. And I was thinking, maybe what the thoughts were on, I've never done this, but can you do a conditional approval with the condition of returning to the planning boards with plans for final approval? You follow me? So you satisfy the final, you satisfy the condition of approval, conditional approval, but with expectation you have to return to the board for final approval on the revised plan. Because I was, what I was trying to say is like, that's a lot of information for, to put on staff to make a deter, I mean, I'd be more comfortable with them making that determination on these issues.
Yeah. Please.
Thanks. Yes, that, that's basically what I was suggesting before, is that we'd expect to come back to the board. The board would review the placement of the trees, the placement of the sidewalk and so on. But to be able to obtain a conditional approval tonight would be significant for the applicant's purposes.
Yeah.
So would the conditions of approval then be, so it'd be like a sidewalk and pedestrian circulation plan that is.
Put on the plan and viewed.
And reviewed and, yeah, exactly. That's what I'm saying. Like, it's hard to, it becomes a little bit more qualitative. Like, you know, we're not saying we're going to approve it if you just stick something on the plan. If we don't like what you stick on the plan, then.
Still subject to review.
Right. We'd come, we'd come back to review, but it would be, it would be the board's discretion to determine whether or not those conditions were satisfied as opposed to the staff.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
I think Jen's point though is it's not just, yes, we threw a sidewalk on the plan. It's, we threw a sidewalk that satisfied the board's design, style of sidewalk or whatever.
Right.
So I think, in that regard, I'm comfortable.
Do we have to, do we have to be clear on what it is that we are going to review at that next meeting?
Well, it's a condition of the approval.
If new things.
It would be a condition of the approval.
Okay.
Yeah.
So something that we haven't even thought of tonight could come up at that subsequent.
Probably takes that off the table.
So we better, or we'll know what we want.
I think it's limiting the review.
But I don't think we can keep coming back with more things.
No, no, limit.
Well, then I'm, then I'm misunderstanding what you're saying.
No, she's bringing up the question.
I just want to make sure that we're all aware that if we have something.
We were talking about a conditional approval.
Right.
Yes.
And, and then they come back and we have to approve several of the items we've based our approval. But not, it's not starting.
I don't want, I don't think we should entertain anything new.
Correct.
No, nothing new. That it's, that it's, it's final to the extent, other than these one or two or three items. But if we keep opening it up and opening, I, I. No, I'm not going to open it up. At this point in time, it's fine. But if we had a series of abutters, which we have had in the past, we need to be very careful.
Well, they should be here tonight.
I am.
But I'm not in the butter. Okay.
So what I would envision is that the conditions, if there were a conditional approval tonight, would be along the lines of a sidewalk added to the plans, to the satisfaction of the board, you know, two shade trees added to the frontage of the site.
It was three.
To the satisfaction of the board, three, whatever it was. But those specific conditions, so that those are what we're coming back for the board to review and determine whether they've been satisfied.
Exactly.
Correct. That's what we're talking about.
As long as we understand that, the board understands.
Would that include the drainage easement to be seen too?
Excuse me?
The drainage easement to be seen also.
She's on plans.
Yes. Earlier at the beginning of this.
Dave talked about the drainage easement.
There's a drainage easement, and they said they'd provide it.
Yeah.
It can.
Please.
Yeah.
I'm not voting, so please.
But you're talking. That's good.
Okay. All right, we're ready to bring it back to the board.
No, I just want to make sure that if anybody has any other concerns or issues or questions right now, that now's the time to ask, because once we deliberate and come to a vote, any other items that you may find out about after, you're, you don't get a chance to, to address them. So if you have something now, let's, let's hear.
Do you?
I do not know, but.
Very nicely stated. Took the words right out of my pocket. And thank you. This is part of this, this board. We watch out and make sure we get the trees, the dogs crossed and quiet. Okay, I'll bring it back to close the public hearing. And if any more discussion now at this point.
Are you working on conditions over there?
Yeah, I already had them, but I'm, I'm just, just while it's fresh in my mind, may I, thanks. The relocation of the intersection, elimination of the left-hand turns onto Epping Road from the southerly access, a pedestrian access plan with a sidewalk along the Epping Road frontage, and the addition of shade trees along the Epping Road frontage. Is that it?
The landscaping strip.
Oh, landscaping strip. Yeah.
To 10 feet.
Trees.
Between the trees.
Trees, please.
Please.
So the, the red lines will become part of the plan.
No left turns.
That's what they're saying. No left turns.
That's what they're going to put out.
That's what they're going to put out.
But I do think we need to note that the board is allowing the truck left turn, right?
It's up to you.
Well, I don't, I don't know how to handle that. I don't want to say that we approved it as no left turns, and then their trucks are doing that.
I get it.
Someone comes back and says, well, the board said no left turns.
I get it.
Well, is the sign like a legally binding thing? Like, if somebody makes a left turn, they could actually be pulled over and handed a ticket? Or is it more of like a guideline?
It's a ticketable offense.
It needs to be in the town ordinance. So if they adopt it, then yes, it's enforceable, but.
They adopt it, what are you saying?
It, to be an offense, when you get, I mean, I'll defer the police to, I'll follow up this. But it's my understanding that it needs to be, when you get a ticket, they need to cite the actual violation. So it, it has to be in the town ordinance.
That if it's.
That there's no left, yeah.
If it turns and you take one, it's just a fine.
Yeah. It's just like no parking. It has to have no parking on this street, no parking on this side of the street. I mean, it's all laid out. It has to, you have to follow it back to a rule. I mean, if it's a stop sign, then it's a general, you know, that's a general rule in our code that, you know, you must stop at stop signs or whatever. But that's my understanding. But I think you're prohibiting left turns out of that, you know, the signage and so forth. It's good.
Yeah, I don't think we want to say that we're allowing trucks, because then, you know, a truck causes an accident. It's like, well, the planning board said I could.
Well, we are saying.
But their, their plans are accommodating if a truck wants to make a left turn.
I'm definitely not. I'm not going to vote no left turns if we don't allow them to have their trucks turn left. That's right.
Yeah, I mean, if you're not going to allow them to turn the left, left-hand truck, then, you know, you, you potentially look into redesigning that Continental intersection so they can get out and go down and turn around.
Right. So I, I, I thought we had found a solution to allowing trucks only.
We did. And the solution was to put, to call it no left turns without, I mean, people aren't going to read, you know, truck without, except trucks. Well, what kind of trucks? Are we going to put the gross vehicle weight of the vehicle or the number of axles?
They have a sign, no left turn, but understanding that their approval allows their service vehicles for their facility to take that left.
You could say that. And then you could say it during certain, you know, off-peak hours, non-peak hours.
Can you put that in the condition that we're voting on?
I would, they could put it on the revised plans that you're coming back to review. Yeah, you can make it a condition too. Either way.
Yeah.
Well, I, I just wanted to be clear that we're not, my position is I don't want to prohibit the left turn. Hundred percent.
What do you think of that, Jason? Putting a?
Yeah, I think that it's, it's almost like, you know, you've, you've seen those different signs that they have up, like authorized vehicles only.
Right.
You know, it's almost like no left turns, service vehicles exempt, you know, things like that. It's, it's a very tricky situation. Once, if you, if you are going to put in to the zoning, into the ordinance, that, that this driveway is going to not allow left turns out, it's enforceable. And, you know, unless you're going to have some kind of a, you know, footnote associated with it saying, except for these types of vehicles. It's tricky. I don't know if the applicant's team has any suggestions? To, to your point, Mr. Jay, Mr. Vice Chair, we could add some signage indicating no left turn except for authorized vehicles. And then obviously, I think the authorized vehicle would be obvious. We can definitely put a note on the plan. I know it's a note on a plan that's being filed away, but, I mean, it, it is there. It's, it'll be in the.
Permission. I don't want to tell you, I don't want to vote something that doesn't give you permission.
Absolutely. I mean, it'll be in the record if somebody feels that they need to, you know, read the minutes. It's in the record. I think it's very obvious what everybody here is, is saying. If we have the signage that indicates no left turn, authorized vehicles only, I think that covers, that covers, I believe, what we need. And I, hopefully, what you guys feel is adequate.
Yeah. Okay. What?
I, I just find, well, what does authorized vehicles mean? You know, you know, oh, we authorize them. I mean, I don't know that.
Anchors.
I'm just, I'm trying to, yeah.
I understand what Eric's trying to, he's.
I'm trying to, I know what he's trying to do, and I'd like to get there, but I know what you're saying. Like, you know.
I mean, is a, is a passenger car an authorized vehicle?
Yeah.
No, I mean, I think we all know that. You know.
I guess if a cop pulls someone over and then someone said, no, 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 they, they're authorized, they're the manager here, you know, like, that could get, I mean, someone could, I've, I've, I read cases all the time, so.
Our concern is to allow.
What's a through truck?
The fill, filling truck.
No through truck.
What do you call those?
What does no through truck?
Yeah, what, what are those? Yeah, let's, let's further define exactly what is going to take a left there.
Yeah.
How about we do that?
How about fuel trucks?
Absolutely. Fuel truck would definitely be.
What size are they?
It's typically a WB50 or so, plus or minus, which is, which is a, you know, a cab with a, with a trailer behind it.
Yeah.
The large, the large delivery vehicles, you know, that, anything with the articulating type movement, you know, a cab with a, with a, with a bed for it that's delivering fuel you know, a cab with a, with a, with a bed for it that's delivering fuel or delivering product to the store, for the store, would be allowed to make that movement. You know, as somebody who's, who's a manager, should they be making that movement? No, will they? Who knows?
We don't know, right, we can't.
You know, we, we can only put the, the information on the plan, you never know what people are going to do. And that is how accidents happen, I, I totally understand, but we're, we're trying to be observant of what the board is looking for, but we also need the left-hand turn for the tanker truck and the large vehicles.
Understood.
There's no, there's nothing we can do about it.
You got good language there yet?
Not yet, I'm, I'm not hearing, what, what is the, what's the smallest vehicle that will need that?
If we just say no left turns, except fueling vehicles.
I'd love that.
Except fueling trucks.
Sure, but that's not what Chris just said.
I'm not with that.
Okay, you said any delivery vehicles that might not.
I thought like a bread truck is going to go use it the way you were talking.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, I, I just, I think the board wants to be clear.
I'm better with fuel.
We're getting there.
Fuel sounds really good.
Trucks only.
Fuel trucks only. No left turns, fuel trucks only, so I don't know.
Same, except fuel trucks.
Except fuel trucks.
Yeah, perfect.
Does that work? Kind of.
Why, it seems it works. Are you going to enforce it?
That's not our problem.
No, because you can't, the best the board can do, the best the board can do is approve something that shows on the plans with the expectation that people will abide by it.
Right.
People are not, not everyone's going to abide by things, so you can't cover that, you just can't. So by saying no left turns except fuel trucks, if people take a left turn out of there that are not a fuel truck and something happens, it's not.
We prohibit it.
Yeah, we, you prohibit it, so we're good.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Please do it, I didn't stay, I'm standing up because my legs get cramped, so.
Totally understood.
I'm not trying to do anything, just, you know, try to get, yeah, so, thank you.
So it's come to my attention that there may be delivery vehicles depending on who the tenant is that are in addition to fuel. So what if we said except delivery vehicles?
No.
Or delivery trucks?
The old Dave Sharpe.
The J.J. Nissan box truck that's like 18 feet.
With tractor trailers, right?
Remember you're the only guy who fills the stern.
Tractor trailers.
You guys issue permits to your vendors, could it be by permit only?
Tractor trailers?
Yeah, or, yeah.
Is that a good?
Well, I know, you have, you have tractor trailers that come in and get a sandwich.
How many wheels?
What about, what about a permit? I, I mean, I'm just trying to, so it's exclusive for people that are servicing you.
We're trying to make it so when it's really necessary.
Tractor trailer?
Right, so when it's necessary.
Would, would the board be comfortable with tractor trailer? No left turns except for?
That's what I came up with.
Tractor trailers.
That's the reason, approve. Length of the vehicle.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I can make a left turn?
What are you driving? Bring your folks over there later?
Okay. So as, Dave, you've got conditions down there, yeah?
Oh, yeah.
He started with.
Yeah, but this last one, this last one is kind of throwing a wrench into some prior ones, so.
Did you get the one about the easement, the drainage easement?
Yeah, I, I already had that one. So you want me, are you?
Hold on, I want to look at your old one, the one you started debating with.
You got that?
You brought one to us.
I got them right here, too.
I think we've evolved from what you brought.
While they're looking at that on your landscape plan, can you, um, in your legend, your planting schedule, the TO is not in the legend, and it's the trees that are around the dumpster. I don't know if you said those were juniper, I don't know what you said.
There would be arbovites.
Arbovite.
Dugax, oxidant, oxid, oh my gosh, I can't say it. Dugax, oxidantalis.
I deferred to Jen on that one.
You didn't have any.
They're coming right down for it.
Yep, you are, you are correct, it, it is not on the list. We will, we will add it to the legend, but they are.
They're ten of.
They're the six-foot arbovite, four to six-foot tall arbovites to provide the additional shading. Or screening, I should say.
I brought gum just for my, my chair.
Oh, here, yes, come on, two.
It's just not in the package, Dave, it was awful.
What? No.
That's why I can't find it.
Uh-huh.
It's not in there. Do you want me to read them? Are you ready for them?
You ready?
Yes.
For conditions? All right, yes, please.
Wait a minute.
You have a copy for the applicants?
Is there no way?
Never mind, I'm, I'm.
Don't say it.
Pete, don't do it, to read along, do you need a copy to read along or someone more?
I can share.
There's one right there. There should be extras.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, most, most of these, the first, all of these are the, the first, there's 11, they're all the standard conditions, but as always, I will read them all. And then we'll get into the specific ones that came from tonight. And elect, well, number one, an electronic as-built plan of the entire property with details acceptable to the town shall be provided prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Oh, that wasn't, I forgot that. Prior to the certificate of occupancy, period, scratch that. This plan must be in DWG or DFX file format and in N D 1983 State Plan New Hampshire, FIPS 2800 feet coordinates. Two, all monumentations shall be set in accordance with section 9.25 of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Three, a pre-construction meeting shall be arranged by the applicant and is contracted with the town engineer prior to any site work commencing. The following must be submitted for review and approval prior to the pre-con meeting. The SWIP Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, if applicable, be submitted to and reviewed for approval by DPW, a project schedule and construction cost estimate. Number four, all comments in the most recent Underwood Engineers Incorporated letter shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the town planner prior to signing the final plans. The five third-party construction inspection fees shall be paid prior to scheduling the pre-construction meeting. Six, the stormwater inspection maintenance log, the de-icing log, the first defense inspection and maintenance log, and the jellyfish filter inspection and maintenance log in the, in the inspection and maintenance manual for stormwater management systems dated April 20th, 2021, and revised on July 12th, 2021, shall be completed and submitted to the town engineer annually on and before January 31st. This requirement shall be an ongoing condition of approval. Seven, all applicable state permit approval numbers shall be noted on the final plans. All appropriate fees to be paid included but not limited to sewer water connection fees, impact fees and inspection fees, including third-party inspections prior to the issuance of a building permit or a certificate of occupancy, which is, whichever is applicable is determined by the town. Eight, all door, all outdoor lighting, including security lights, shall be downlit and shielded so no direct light is visible from adjacent properties and/or roadways. Nine, all landscaping shown on plan shall be maintained and any dead or dilated patients shall be replaced no later than the following growing season, as long as the site plan remains valid. This condition is not intended to circumvent the revocation procedures set forth in state statutes. Ten, if determined applicable by the Exeter Department of Public Works, the applicant shall submit the land use and stormwater management information about the project using the PTAP online municipal tracking tool. The PTAP's middle must be accepted by DPW prior to the pre-construction meeting. Eleven, a restoration and erosion control surety in an amount and form reviewed and approved by the town planner in accordance with section 12 of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations shall be provided prior to any site work. Now on specific ones that I think I got from tonight, which would be twelve. Final plans shall show a drainage easement to discharge stormwater from DMH1 into the closed system on the adjacent property, tax map 47 lot 1-1. Said easement shall be duly recorded or a copy of the recorded document shall be provided prior to or at the pre-construction meeting. Fourteen would be the do not block intersection striping and signage shall be reviewed by the Department of Public Works and they will determine if the proposed signage and striping is appropriate. This decision shall be made prior to signing the final plans and the final plans shall be consistent with DPW's determination. And then the final one, the applicant shall return to the planning board with revised plans depicting the board's discussion that include relocation of the intersection, elimination of the left-hand turn onto Epping Road from the southerly access, except for tractor trailer trucks, a pedestrian access plan with a sidewalk along the Epping Road frontage and the addition of shade trees along the Epping Road frontage, and the widening of the landscape strip from eight to 10 feet. The revised plan shall be reviewed and approved by the board prior to signing the final plans. Did that capture it?
Am I allowed to speak?
Yeah.
I'm still not quite sure after this last few meetings, does a sidewalk include gens?
Yeah, that's what, why I put aside a pedestrian access plan with a sidewalk.
Thank you.
So it's a sidewalk, it's pedestrian access, how they're going to get from the sidewalk to the site and, and internally safely to the business.
Can we also see the document of the easement? You said and/or, can we see?
Well, I said or, uh, because it could be recorded already, they said one exists, so it could be of record already.
So we have to go on, on.
No, they have to bring that.
Yeah, they can bring it.
Oh, okay.
But they don't have to record a new one.
No, oh, no, no, I just wanted to see the language of the term.
No, they should bring it.
Okay, thank you.
Right?
Well, yeah, if they have it. And they said they have it, I don't know if it's of record or not, you know, like.
To us.
Yeah, I mean, if it's just shown on like a prior plan, but it was never recorded or anything, I mean, I would want to formalize it.
Right.
If, if it's not formalized, we will formalize it, we'll provide documentation to the board.
That's what basically I would say.
Thank you. I just want to make.
And we can just make that clear, bring that with you next time, so.
Or ahead of time is better. Can you read those again, please? The, not, not, okay. Not the boiler, start from the first one, not the boilerplate.
Okay.
I think your numbers were wrong too. You went from 12, I thought to 14.
I might have, because I had 13 about the three trees.
Okay.
But I crossed 13 out, so I might have just said 14, but it was actually 13.
Go back through those real quick.
Well, 13 is not blocking the intersection.
There was three.
Okay.
There's three additional conditions beyond the standard.
Yeah.
The first one is, final plans shall show a drain and easement to discharge stormwater from DMH1 into the closed system on the adjacent property, tax map 47 lot 1-1. Said easement shall be duly recorded or a copy of the recorded document be provided prior to or at the pre-construction meeting.
All right, so I think we want to see it.
That's a, yeah, I just, prior, um, uh, shall be provided to the board.
Period.
Prior to final approval.
There you go.
Because that's what you're going to get.
Right, Nancy, that's you want, you wanted to see it, not just pre-construction.
Whether, whether it's formalized or draft, we'll provide you something.
Yeah.
Yeah. So prior to final approval, all right. The do not block, this would be 13 then, it wouldn't be 14, 13. The do not block intersection striping and signage shall be reviewed by the Department of Public Works and they will determine if the proposed striping and signage is appropriate. This decision shall be made prior to signing the final plans and the final plan shall be consistent with the DPW's determination. Is that okay?
Yes.
Basically what Jason's saying is, you know, have DPW look at it, are they okay with this block? And if they are, then we can do it. If they don't want it on there, it's their roadway and they can say, no, we'd rather not have it. So basically that's what that means. And the last one, the applicant shall return to the planning board with revised plans depicting the board's discussion that include relocation of the intersection, elimination of the left-hand turns onto Epping Road from the southerly access, except for tractor trailer trucks, a pedestrian plan with a sidewalk along the Epping Road frontage and the addition of shade, addition, the addition of shade trees along the Epping Road frontage and the widening of the landscape strip from eight to 10 feet. The revised plan shall be reviewed and approved by the board prior to signing the final plans.
Did you have the thing about moving the access up?
That's why I said relocation, that's why I kind of said the applicant should with revised plans depicting the board's discussion. So I kind of tried to capture everything of the little nuance, like that little strip, whatever you called it, you know, the group pavement and so forth.
Just so everybody's clear, we're providing a rumble strip like we, like we've shown.
Yeah.
And shifting the driveway up slightly.
Right.
And that's, and then with the, with the do not, uh, no left turn and the sidewalks, et cetera, yep.
I think that covers it.
I think it does too, anybody?
One question. In your lighting plan, we talked briefly about, um, cutting off the lights around the car wash at a certain time, like, I don't know if it was 10 o'clock or if it was, I don't remember exactly what we talked about.
We briefly discussed it, I don't think we got down to any formal, uh, discussion of what we're going to do.
Okay, could we talk about that?
I believe 10 o'clock is acceptable to our, to our, to our client.
Does that work?
Whether they're shut off fully or dimmed down significantly, uh, is that something we could?
Do you need them, do you need any there?
From a safety point of view, you know, we, we wouldn't like the whole back of the site to be, to be black, you know, dark.
So dimmed considerably.
Yeah, we, we can come back with something at, at the next hearing and, and provide you something.
Okay, thank you.
Now, you want to add that?
Then that has to be added, please.
Yeah.
What, did you, because I just had the question about lighting too. I wasn't here at the first presentation, was that discussed then?
Briefly.
Okay.
Just.
Yeah, I was just wondering, because I just, I was looking through the plans to try to find some more details about the lighting and I found the photo metrics, um, and one light pole, but I was wondering if you could just quickly walk us through, I mean, gas stations have like lights in the canopies and lights on the buildings, like.
Everything, everything in the canopy will all be flush mount lights, um, you know, so the lens will be basically, you know, mounted to the, underneath of the canopy. Gone are the days of the lights hanging down and, you know, seeing that. So all the canopy lights are flush mount, all the soffit lights around the store are soffit lights or they're flush mount essentially soffit lights. And then all the, um, site lighting are all dark sky compliant, downward facing, nothing, uh, they're, they're shielded to minimize light intrusion onto, onto properties, onto adjacent properties.
And will they be on all night long?
So I believe, so we are going 24 hours, I, I believe we are looking for 24 hours, correct? And then we, that's what we briefly discussed on dimming the, um, the lights in the rear for the car wash, because obviously the car wash would not be open 24 hours.
Okay.
I think they all have to be dimmed after 10 o'clock and, and reduced in intensity, I believe. I put that in there.
We can, we can work that, we can work that out.
I think you're right. Seems like we do, I think I really remember that.
I believe you're right, Dave, I do believe we indicated that we would comply with the, the town regulations, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, but I put in there, put exterior lighting on dimmers to reduce intensity after hours as, as, as another one of the list.
Hey, I've been asked by the chair to make a motion. I don't know, I don't know if I'm really comfortable with it.
Well.
I think Mark, the.
That's, that's really, very nice.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, for Planning Board Case 21-4 for Noria Energy Corporation to be approved, uh, with the following conditions as read by the town planner, Dave Sharpe.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Or is there discussion?
Second.
Second, I'll second.
Second, we can still discuss that executive.
When is this, is there like a timeframe, when, when do they come back?
They can't do anything until they come back, it's not a real approval.
Yeah, they're, they're going to.
They're like in purgatory. They're approved but not really approved. We're doing a Texas two-step approval.
If, if I, when, when would the?
As you can, right?
Obviously, obviously this is a special meeting.
Yeah.
Um, so I believe the next meeting would possibly be in two weeks. It doesn't really give us a lot of time, doesn't give you enough time, anybody enough time, so.
I can stop you there. The, the next available agenda is the first meeting in September.
Thank you. We'll see, we'll see you hopefully on September 1st.
We need to vote on the approval, or should we add the time for them to come back? Is there a part of our vote?
No, I think it gives them, yeah, the, the ball's in their court to come back before they can get final approval, so I think they would be motivated, motivated to do so.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we'll get through our motion, and then we'll schedule them for the next time.
And then essentially, a conditional approval, and according to our regulations, is valid for 180 days for them to satisfy the approval. So, basically, it's already in, you know, there's an internal six-month clock on it for them to come back, so.
Yeah.
And I'm sure that they will be back a lot sooner than that.
Yeah. So, there's a motion on the table. Any discussion?
There's a second.
I seconded.
Oh, you did, thank you.
I did, yeah.
Thank you. Any discussion? Uh, this is a roll call vote, so, Jen, let's start with you, please.
Aye.
Aye. Aaron?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 No nays, no abstentions?
All right, so, thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience.
Schedule, you, you want us to schedule you?
9-1 would be good.
Okay. Is that, is that the date, 9-1, 7 o'clock? 9-1?
No.
Would be like the 8th?
You didn't table, what do you mean table?
It's September, but-
To come back?
It's September 1st.
They want to get on the agenda. Should we schedule them or not?
No, I can do it.
Are you going to do it on that one, or?
Yeah, it's, uh, it's the, well, I'll tell you right now, I think it's the, September 9th.
9th?
Yeah. Yeah, talk to me.
I will.
And Bar, we'll, we'll get you on the agenda.
I appreciate your time and patience.
Thank you. Let's see, this number was holding, so.
Hey, Lang?
I wish I had time.
Do you want to activate Nancy's consent since I'm recused, so you can have a full planning board? And then I can, I can step down.
Sure. I was gonna-
Sheesh.
I know.
Okay, I'm going to make a little switcheroo here. Ms. Nancy, I'm going to ask you to step up and act as Mr. Mark would like to step down for logical reasons.
So, I can't go home, either?
You can't go home, either.
So, that means you need to speak again.
The thing about, like, trying to force people into-
I do. Participate, we need an active board. Sick of talking.
But that's an individual thing.
Another-
Now, I put everything down.
Mark's a friend.
That doesn't include my scribblings. That's just his country.
Have you touched on any changes on the, I think, the ad?
My eyes are going.
Continued public hearing.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
On the application of Brian Gresset for a lot consolidation subdivision, lot line adjustment, wetland conditional use permit, shoreline conditional use permit, and site plan- also a stain unit, all of the family condominiums.
Board members, do you find any?
Someone else could-
Oh, no.
Sorry, we were talking about the Collier brothers. No one in the board members who the Collier brothers.
Okay.
Single family, family meeting, open space development and associated site improvements on properties located off Kamala Flane and Ellway. Subject properties are situated in the R1 low-density residential and NP neighborhood professional zoning districts, tax map parcel number 96-15, number 81-53, 96-9, Planning Board Case 20-22-2. And David, could you start us off at least?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll briefly just go through the history. Yes, the May 27, the May 27 meeting, the board's going to accept the yield plan. The applicant here before the board is to attend the meetings of the public hearing on the applications. After lengthy discussion, the board is in table for the discussion of the application through July 15, 2021 meeting. And the applicant here is here next week. Right here, under justification, answering questions for the board at that meeting. At the July 15, 2021 meeting, the board did discuss the following, as a following by notes of, of a request for the applicant to provide a mix of landscaping along the buffer, adding deciduous trees to the mix, adding a pedestrian guardrail, explore making at least part of the center of the cul-de-sac, ability to create focal points, usable area, the doors or lapar trees between roadways and units. You mentioned fix, upgrade the fence behind proposed units 8 through 10. We talked about adding a reflective sign for vehicles approaching the cul-de-sac. You asked for a draft language regarding the proposed covenants on the open space that will be offered to the town, and question access to the open space that will be offered to the town. I got a green light. It might not be a murder. That's probably-
I would, kidding. I would like to note that a light pole at the cul-de-sac was discussed with TRC, but we felt it was unnecessary. As such, the HOA could always add lighting if they choose. We felt that was decision best left for the homeowners, plus the, we're always very concerned about dark sky compliant and the impact on wildlife. Unnecessarily, if the lighting is not needed. As previously mentioned in my July 8 memo, the TRC has no objection to the sidewalk waiver or the roadway perimeter waiver. I also do not believe a waiver from the slope-granted curbing in a cul-de-sac is necessary, so I, I think the board may have made that determination before. I interpret the regulation to mean that the curbing shall be granted if curbing is proposed. In this case, it's open design, so I don't believe one's needed, but I do have that waiver motion in there, in case the board feels otherwise. At the last meeting, the board did close the public hearing, and as such, I, I could not provide you with any additional materials. However, I did hear from the applicant who would like to respond to the access matter that was raised by the board and clarify the 50-foot perimeter buffer waiver. In light of this, I spoke with the chair, and he agreed to reopen the public hearing for the limited purpose of accepting these materials and any other information received from the butters on this topic. I did enclose four revised plan sheets and correspondence from attorney passe dated July 22nd, and the, and the letter of authorization from Brett Neeper, trustee, and a draft copy of the proposed conservation deed provided by the applicant. If and when I, I said if and when I receive anything from the public on these topics, I will forward it on to the board. I have not received anything from any of the butters in, in response to these, these new, I mean, not in this, you know, latest submission by the applicant to respond to the, the planning board's request at the last meeting. I did provide waiver motions as standard, and also, one final thing that I would ask, because I was, there was some discussion, I had an email, discussion with, within a butter who asked about when the, the, the planning board, they mentioned that a planning board member said that they didn't, they declined sharing the town council memo that they requested. Remember, the applicant, the butters sent the letters, and one of them requests, several requests, one was to share the town council's memo regarding the legal opinion we received on the Gresset matter, and I think Mr. Brown said, you know, no, we, we're not going to share that. And I, and I relayed that, and he said it wasn't, you know, denied, and I said, well, they, they didn't know, they didn't vote on it, but then he clarified that it was a 91A request. I don't believe that was originally in his, any of his paperwork, that it was a 91A request. So, due to that, I would recommend that the board just take a formal vote. I do believe that's an excludable piece of the file that you can exclude under the 91A and not provide to folks, but I would just suggest you take a vote on that and, and make it official, one way or the other, whether you're, you know, you want to release that legal opinion, or you want to exclude it from 91A.
Okay.
Because when I get 91A requests, I, you know, I respond to them, but this was a 91A request that I don't have the authority to release that opinion, you know, the board, the board does. So, you should vote accordingly, is what I would recommend, now that he clarified that it was actually a 91A request.
Well, I, I think I'd like to see us take care of that first, and we won't forget to do it. All right, do you have a copy of the language in 91A?
I would just say, I would make a motion to deny the request.
Okay, well, I would still move.
Yeah, deny the request, you know, under attorney-client privilege, and then just vote on it.
Well, but there's, that's why I'm, and Nancy will help me here, but I believe there's specific language in 91A6. Now, I don't want to get tangled up here. Justice is smiling. But I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable, because this, this, these 91A things make, make me nervous. And there are provisions within the statute that speak clearly to exemptions, and I don't want to take any more time. I've made the motion, but I do have some reservations that we need to be a bit more specific for our reasons of denial.
Attorney-client privilege.
Yeah, well-
But that might not be the actual language. So, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
That we just decide, we don't have to include 91A in the motion, right?
I didn't, yeah, I didn't put that in the motion.
No, I don't think we need to actually put 91A-
But once we start down that road, then we've got to be more specific. So, I agree that I'll amend my motion to take out and reference the 91A. Okay?
Okay, and I'll second that.
Okay. Rooted and seconded. I think your voice vote's adequate, so those in favor, please, if you get by saying aye.
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 Vote. Am I all right, Counselor? Mr. Chairman? Opposition? No, 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 I was thinking- No, 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 no. Just keep with them. I've asked for the ayes, I'm asking for the opposition, I'm asking for abstention. Thank you. I was just adding- It carries. I'm going to add a little- No, go ahead.
You kept these people here for three hours now.
Okay, as, as David read it here, I'd want to reopen the public hearing at this point, so that Attorney Gresset can, can go ahead and clarify those points for us.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Justin Passe, good to be with everyone tonight from DTC Lawyers here in town, joined as always by Brian Gresset, the applicant, and Christian Smith from Beals Associate, the engineer on the project. Very brief presentation tonight. We filed a letter that responded mostly to issues that came up during the deliberation that we started on the 15th, I think the date was, and frankly, it's reporting, I think, with a lot of success, the, the ways that the applicant was able to meet the requests and discussion points that were made at the 15th, on the hearing on the 15th. So, that's the, the majority of the letter. We're happy to, to address any specific questions that the board has about those things. I did want to, I'm going to turn it over to Christian to just briefly summarize the plan changes that were filed in response to comments made at the hearing on the 15th. My piece really was just to clarify an issue that Mr. Sharpe and I discussed after the last hearing, as regards to the perimeter buffer waiver request. As the board is aware, we've really briefed the analysis on that quite a bit. It goes side by side with our conditional use permit and the basis for that. But the issue was, in learning about recent events, about other applications, other open space applications that had perimeter buffer waivers or had perimeter buffers, there was confusion about what could and could not go in, in the area. And Mr. Sharpe pointed out that in the regulation, it says that the buffer strip is supposed to be comprised of natural or planted vegetation. We've always shown on the plans that the, the buffer strip is a 50-foot building setback when the zoning ordinance really requires a 25-foot zoning, uh, setback. So, what we've done to clarify the issue, because we've always briefed, and even in our waiver, we, we referenced that in the 25 feet closest to the buildings, the houses, units 1 through 7 on the site plan, that there would be rec areas and patios. But a patio is not a, a natural or planted vegetation, it's, it's man-made. So, what we've done is, we've changed the plan, I'm referring specifically to, well, it's on the site plan, you'll see typical depictions of patios, 13 by 25 foot, 300 square foot, 325 square foot patios on the backs of units 1 through 7. So, that's on the site plan now. On sheet 12 of 19, it's, it's titled Plan and Profile, we've indicated on a new note, new note 16, that units 1 through 7 may encroach into the 50-foot buffer, a max of 325 square feet, with a maximum depth of 13 feet and length of 25 feet, solely for the purpose of at-grade patio area. Restrictions shall be incorporated into the condominium documents. So, the point of this clarification is to show, it's still going to be 50-foot building setback. These patio areas, which are obviously impervious and man-made, will be permitted, but there will be no decks, there will be no other structures, and so, that clarification, I think, was called for in light of the conversation that Mr. Sharpe and I had. And hopefully, this level of granularity, in, in addition to including this language in the condominium documents, will avoid enforcement issues or questions with, when the development's ultimately, ultimately built out. So, that's my piece for tonight. I'm going to turn it over to, to Christian to address the plan changes, and certainly, if there are any questions about what we filed in our letter from last week, happy to answer those as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Justin. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, again, Christian Smith from Beals Associates. And I think it would be best for me to demonstrate on the plan how the edits have been made. And we kind of just went through David's bullet point list that, that we got from the last meeting, and I'll, I'll walk through that very quickly if I can. So, they wanted, there wanted to be a mix of trees. We are now specifying three different species of the evergreens throughout both, both of these planting areas, as well as the buffer enhancement area. The question specific to adding a pedestrian rail along the guardrail, what I was able to determine is, such a feature does not exist. After about two hours of, of researching this and trying to find out something to retrofit to an actual roadway guardrail, I ended up calling a colleague of mine, who works for Vanesson Associates, very renowned traffic engineer, and I asked him if he'd ever heard of anything such as that, and he indicated that he had not. He said typically what you're going to find for pedestrian rails, they're going to be designed for commercial sites with walkways adjacent to driveways, park, parking lots, and things of that nature. So, what we did is, we came up with the idea of, we, we did have some room behind the guardrail before you get to the, the block wall, so we specified in, they are green velvet boxwoods, three feet on center. Now, these trees grow about three feet in width, two to three feet in width, and about three feet in height. So, this should, this should curtail, because the top of the guardrail, 31 inches from the finished grade, and the gap underneath is about 17 inches, based on the detail that you can look at on the detail sheet. So, that will effectively infill the area, and I think quell the concern of children crawling under or over, because they're going to be just higher than the, than the guardrail at maturity, so we, we hope that's addressed that particular issue. Specific to the light and the reflective sign, we have proposed a, an MUTCD end-of-road sign, which unfortunately is a big reflective ugly marker, but that will keep vehicles out of the cul-de-sac, out of the basin within the cul-de-sac. And, and following up on the cul-de-sac area, we have not gone through and added any proposed plantings there. We reviewed that option, or, or spoke with DPW Highway about, you know, if this was a public road, would you allow plantings around that, being that it's being used as a drainage basin? And they basically said we would really discourage it to the extent possible, because they're going to be, you know, this is a, this whole thing is super elevated from the edge of pavement towards the center of the cul-de-sac. So, they're going to come around with one sweep of snow, a second sweep of snow, and basically, they didn't have any good idea that, that those plants would be very viable after one, one winter season. Again, the only other thing we did not propose was a, a streetlight at that intersection, and again, we feel that the end-of-road marker is, is certainly going to be adequate for that. We did add a note, I'm not sure if it made it to this plan, yes, it did. The note regarding repair the fence back here, and Mr. Gresset's intention is to add two additional rails to that split-rail fence, so it will provide a little bit more privacy as well. And then with regard to the, the draft language, I think that was covered in, in Justin's memo, and also access to the open space, I believe you covered that as well, is that correct, Justin? So, I think with that, folks, we will entertain any questions, comments that the board may have.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments? Glenn?
On this list, one thing that wasn't on here, again, I'm not trying to steal Jen's comments, but about getting an arborist, is that something, did you look into that?
I believe Mr. Gresset, oh, Justin's coming to address that right now.
It was actually an oversight, Miss English, I was supposed to include that in the letter, and I just, I didn't.
Okay, that's okay. I just didn't want, I thought that was a good idea, and I didn't want that to get-
We, I brought with me, and I brought copies, I could distribute, a proposed condition of approval that basically says the applicant or his successor will have to consult an arborist before construction begins of the road to determine the best methods to protect and preserve the, the white swamp oak that are immediately adjacent to the entrance, you know, on the south side of the new access road. So, we would be happy with a condition of approval that said that.
Yeah, I would just add, like, it should, it should happen as far before construction as possible. Like, some of these measures are most effective if they're done six months, eight months before you start digging, so, you know, I want to add. I mean, if you're, if, like, obviously, I don't want you to stop, like, just, you know, don't, don't do it the day before, preferably. But you don't have to, like, wait six months to start digging.
I could, Mr. Chairman, if, if it pleases the board, I could pass out the proposed condition, if the board would like to take a look.
Sure. Please. Sure, please.
And while Mr. Passay is doing that, Mr. Chairman, I will hit the final point that I forgot. Relatively obvious, but we did actually propose deciduous, obviously, wild apple trees as street trees around the road as well.
Lovely. Seventeen. Yes, sir. Okay, let me close the public hearing and bring this back to the board. Any further questions or comments we need? Gwen, did you have something?
Can we question the applicant? Is that...
Yes, we can.
Something we can do? I have questions, but I feel like I'm always talking, so I'm glad if someone else wants to talk. But if nobody else has any, I'll go ahead.
Go ahead.
Nancy looks like...
No. No, I'm looking at the language that we were just handed. Can it say prior to beginning breaking ground of the construction or something? I mean, to me, it's a little vague to say prior to beginning construction.
Sure. I think that we can...
Does that help time, does that help with timeframe?
I literally just had my own copy. It's too late in the night now, I don't have it. But what was the suggestion, Miss Blanger?
Prior to beginning...
You don't have one, Justin?
Prior to beginning...
I don't know where it went.
I don't know.
Brian, you better check your attorney.
Prior to breaking down, breaking ground at the beginning of construction...
How about prior to the pre-construction meeting?
That would be great.
Sure.
Perfect. Thank you.
That triggers us at the pre-construction meeting, before they get filled with permits, to ask that question and make sure that's been done.
Yep.
Prior to the pre-construction meeting?
Not on broken ground, yeah.
Yes. Thank you.
And I think that addresses Miss Martel's point, too, so that we're doing the due diligence in advance.
Yeah, I think instead of saying to identify any reasonable measures to ensure protection of the swamp white oaks, maybe to say, like, the arborist should develop a plan, and the plan should be presented at the pre-construction meeting, maybe. So like, this kind of sounds like, well, to identify any reasonable measures, it gives an out that, well, there's nothing reasonable we can do, so. So I think that basically, like, we would like the applicant to acquire a protection plan from an arborist.
Yeah, I like that. A little more specific.
Protection plan, yeah.
Tree protection plan.
Yep.
Sharpened it up a tad. Okay, Gwen. All set, Jen?
Okay, just if you're going to be specific, you really just want to just develop a plan? Or you want to adhere to the plan? Well, hey, I can give you a plan, Jen, tonight. There you go. Doesn't mean I'm going to do it.
But the plans are binding, and they have to do it. So, okay, so...
Your condition is that they provide a plan.
Okay, so, how should I word it?
We're at the crossroads of where, like, just good faith, you know, and it's like what Dave talked about in the last application. At some point, there's a condition, it can't be so granular that it prevents the project. I mean, these are nice trees, there's 230 of them across the property, we want to do everything we can to save them, but they're not protected, they're not in a special class, they're nice trees, and so we really want to protect them. So I think consulting an arborist and finding reasonable measures to protect them through construction afterwards is about the best that we can do, without saying if something happens to one of the trees, the road has to stop and the permit's gone. You know, I mean, it has to be tailored to the nature of what we're talking about.
Yeah, but I mean, I think a tree protection plan is a very common plan to happen, to occur on a construction set. This set does not have one. We're not asking it for every tree on the property, we're asking it for just this specific row of trees that are going to be severely impacted by the construction. So I think developing a tree protection plan as a condition of approval to be a plan that is part of the plan set, so it has to be followed through, a tree protection plan doesn't, you're not, nothing is going to guarantee that the tree's not going to die. It just shows that we're making, we're taking measures, and this is what the measures are, as opposed to just, yep, we consulted an arborist, check.
Sure.
You know? I think that's all it is, so that there's something on record that says, this is what we did, they still died, we did our best. I think that that kind of protects everything.
So if I'm understanding Miss Martel correctly, it would still say prior to the pre-construction meeting, but in the sort of probative language in the second part of the sentence, it would say, to produce, instead of identify any reasonable measures, it would be to produce a tree protection plan.
Yeah, I mean, can we just word it the same way that we word all the other conditions that require certain plans? Like, and we have other...
I gave a stab at it.
Yeah, why don't you read it?
Prior to the pre-construction meeting, the applicant or his successor assigned to engage an arborist to review the swamp white oaks, shall be swamp white oaks on the south side of the new road, and develop a tree protection plan that shall identify any reasonable measures to ensure protection of the swamp white oaks during and after construction. This plan shall be submitted to the town prior to or after pre-construction.
That's good.
Is that clear?
Yeah, it works.
Is that achieved, Jerry?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Because they'll create the plan.
Yep.
An arborist is going to identify those measures, and that's what they'll...
Yeah, I think then at least we just, we have more documentation.
Okay, thank you, Jen. Gwen, did you have something else?
Couple thoughts and couple questions. In the wet meadow, in your natural resource plan or inventory, they didn't identify any particular type of bird that would, that is nesting there, but there's the assumption that there probably are birds nesting, and that if you're going to mow, it should be in the late fall. So I wonder if that could be in your homeowners association. Is it already?
Yes.
Okay, I did, okay, great.
That's the management plan we can do.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure it continued after this all happens. We haven't talked too much about the Flaherty's driveway and Wild Apple Lane in the wintertime, and how is that, how is plowing going to affect your site distance when you get big piles of snow built up at the end of those, at the end of Wild Apple Lane, at the end of Flaherty's driveway? Because it's like 10 feet, or is there even that in between?
I think that's just about exactly what there is, Gwen. And so obviously, the Flaherty's have their driveway plowed, or I'm not sure if they snow blow it. There will be a management company hired by the condo association to plow and maintain wild, the proposed Wild Apple Lane. And the quick and dirty answer is there will not be large piles of snow left at the end of it. We do have notes on the plan specific to if, you know, at any given snow event, you know, snow areas that are there for storage get overrun, they have to legally remove and dispose of that. But, yeah, there should not be ridiculous burns between those two driveways. That will likely, you know, level itself out, and if it doesn't, there is always a blade that sticks off the end of the plow that can wing it down.
Okay.
But that's basically...
So there is a sledding hill at the end of the drive.
Yeah, well, exactly, and that's what nobody wants to see.
Enormous in a bad winter, so, or a good winter, depending. Christian, while you're there, in one of our previous meetings, maybe in the last one, I was asking about salt in the pond, in the man-made pond. And you brought up that you'd use low-salt measures for treating the road. I saw that somewhere. Is that, that's not sounding... Brian's shaking his head no, and I, but I did read somewhere, you said this will be a low-salt area. Does that, and I don't, I didn't, I didn't...
Yeah, I don't recall. I mean, the, you know, the collection of the road runoff from rain or snow, as we were saying before, is going to get plowed into that sediment for bay. Then it goes through the actual BMP treatment pond, and is treated prior to release. So, I mean, we're doing pretty much the best we can with salt mitigation.
I wish I'd, I wish I'd pulled that aside, so I could reference it.
Couldn't the contractor be instructed to use low salt, or it's an incline, so you're going to have to use some salt somewhere?
Exactly, yeah.
I mean, the town has adopted special treatment for roads. I mean, they have, they have, I can't remember the name of that process that they use, but it's a low-salt, it's mint...
Probably a slurry, I would think.
I don't even know, I don't know that, but it's just, you know, being more, be more conscious of the amount of salt that they're putting on the roads.
Yeah, and actually, part of the alteration to terrain permit is a, an anti-icing log that will have to be kept with the stormwater inspections.
Okay.
So that, today in age, I don't think that's a unique request, you know? They should offer it as part of the service, if they've got any brains.
Right. The Butters aren't here. The people who live across the street from the entrance, or from Wild Apple Lane, has any discussion taken place with them, just to offer them privacy from lights?
I believe Brian's out in a lot of...
I mean, they're, they're some, they look offset, but if you come out, you're, if you come out Wild Apple Lane with a car, it seems like your lights are going to be right in their, the front of their house. I just, I don't know if you've talked to them at all.
Yes, we talked to both of them, the Letzes and the Connollys. That's one of the reasons we moved the road, the location, where before it was a little farther over. So the way it's designed now, we spoke to both of them, we offered evergreen screening for the turn radius. Right now, this is that big wet spot that they were talking about, so now, that is where the headlights would be when they come up. But on both turns, we've offered, and we've labeled it. They have not made a commitment. We made the offer, but we can't take their property, and so we've notated that these plantings would be at the edge of and within the town right of way, to provide that protection for them.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Storm drip. Trash and recycling gets picked up at each, at each unit? Is that the plan?
I guess I should stay up. Yes, that was the plan, the desire of the neighborhood and the Butters, rather than having something up at the road, that just do the normal trash pickup. They're all single-family residences.
Okay, all right. You do have, is there a concert, is there a monitoring fund being set up? This is all through, with the Conservation Commission, but is there a monitoring fund that's being set up to monitor the conservation land?
Christian, Christian said it's a stewardship.
A stewardship?
Yeah, it's the stewardship, and they came up with kind of a formula. So yes, that's part of our discussions.
That would be with them, but, okay, all right. Does anyone else want to go?
Keep going, you're doing good.
Arborists protecting guardrails.
You can go.
I guess, yeah, I'll stop.
I was going to say, while you're looking, I can stay with the conservation question, if that's okay.
Okay, go ahead.
How tied into this project is this conservation piece? And this is why I'm asking. The lawyer, the letter from the attorney dated July 22nd says it's not an issue for the planning board, but we asked to see this language. And it's draft language, and I believe the select board is the one who approves this, would accept this, right? I'm trying to understand, right, ultimately, this, and, you know, has an attorney seen this yet, or anything, do you know? I'm a little concerned, basically, my biggest concern about this document is a lot as saying no hunting, but we're going to allow four people to hunt. I think that's an issue for me, and I'm...
Just so I can understand the context that we're talking about, Miss Blanger.
I'm throwing two things out there at once at you, that's fine. So let me start with the first thing.
I want to make sure I'm answering the question. Are we talking about the conservation easement draft?
Let me start with, I'm going to start with one, and then we can go into the second. Might not even need to address the second here. We asked to see this draft document, but your letter is saying it's not applicable to what we're doing.
I don't understand that, I get it, I'm not sure I understand.
I'll read your, I'll read that sentence in your letter. The Conservation Commission determined access is proposed is not an issue and provided a recommendation the planning board approve it. But, okay, so I said that wrong.
Can I give you a response to that briefly? Okay. No, I don't want to cut you off, but that, I am addressing a different issue with that portion of the letter.
Access.
Access, right. So what I want, what, I'm messing up my question, sorry, it's getting late here. How tied in is the conservation piece to what we're supposed to be approving?
Are you talking about Brickyard's conservation? Or the one that ties...
The jazz.
Okay, the part of, what is part of this project?
Yeah.
Very much tied in.
Okay.
It's part of the open space approval.
It is, and I wanted to make sure we were, I was clear on that.
Exactly.
So where...
But I would tell you an answer, too, that the Conservation Commission does not determine whether we think access is an issue or not.
Right.
Okay. So they may say it's not an issue, I don't really care.
Well, I...
If we think it's an issue, it doesn't matter that they say it's not an issue.
Oh, what they, oh, you don't care about them again, sorry.
I'm not saying I don't care about what they say, but they are not an authority over us.
Right, so this is a draft, this isn't even done yet.
Correct.
Okay.
Their language...
Right.
Of the easement?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
So if we approve things, aren't we doing that without that being done? Is that the way it would normally be done?
I don't know. I mean, we just approved something with many hours of engineering still on the table. So I would say we can approve it and still have this ironed out, but we can certainly require or deny certain parts of that.
You routinely approve draft covenant language. I mean, and it's written into the regs.
Even though it hasn't been accepted?
No, then that's when an attorney review happens. We don't go through that whole process.
I just want to make sure.
And also, of others, everyone else. We often have stuff low still.
Yeah, it does get, it does get reviewed by legal to be consistent with the planning board's approval. You know, that's, we make sure of that, and I make sure of that as part of the process. I mean, they can't change the documents to allow something that the planning board prohibited, you know what I'm saying? So, but these are all, I mean, everyone, is draft at this stage.
Right, but it also goes beyond that, I mean...
Absolutely, yeah, the select board could change it and say, well, we don't want it, and da-da-da, so it's almost like, yeah, we can...
So I want to make sure that that still is a possibility, if there's some concerns with legal and the select board with some of these terms.
Yeah, but to Aaron's point, if you have any, to Aaron's point, if you have any issues with it, you should talk about those issues.
Okay, so then I will say, I do have a few. And one of them is, again, the saying that we can only allow four people to hunt, I think that's a little odd. I don't know the right word for that. The water rights were another thing that concerned me a little bit. Even though right now, as far as I know, that's not one of our potential places to get water for the town, there's a, we have to pay 50 cents or something per gallon. There's a, there's a lot of reserve rights here. So I have a little bit of an issue with all of those.
It's what it says.
Right.
50 cents a gallon is what it says. That's what it says.
It does say that.
Hold this ring.
Yeah, I thought it was a pretty good deal.
Yeah. It's the same, it's the same that the agreement that the town has with the, it's mirrored on.
But the PEA didn't give us land for conservation. We're using their land, right, for water?
Yes, it's a different situation.
Right, but they didn't give us, they're not gifting the town. Right, but they didn't give us, they're not gifting the town land.
They're not doing an open space subdivision, let's put it that way.
I have to say.
Open space subdivision, they're getting, there's a pro and a con here, you, you know what I mean?
Maybe.
No, no, the.
Okay.
Open space subdivision, part of the approval of an open space subdivision is the conservation easement. So that's not really a gift, in my opinion, it's part of the project.
Yes.
Okay.
Otherwise, they have to build all that infrastructure to get 18 units.
Well, there's also, I, um, you're not paying, they're not paying taxes on it anymore, right?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, well, that's, alright, just saying, it's a whole picture here, right?
Absolutely.
Conserv land, yeah, still jacked up.
So, uh, you can say it's not a gift.
I just don't call it a gift, I don't call giving, they're not giving you the land.
It's giving it to the town.
They're negotiating with you to preserve the land, because a, a gift would be, here's the whole thing, I don't want to build up here.
Well, we can go back and forth about the terms of what gift means, but that's my, one of my concerns, my concern.
Maybe we can just ask the applicant on this, 'cause, I mean, this is, it's kinda strange to hold, like, now there's a third party holding a water right, because the HO, it doesn't go to the HOA, it goes to, uh, the grantor. I mean, did you really mean to put this in here, or what, what's the?
Reason that one came up, um, as you know, I was on Water and Sewer for four years, we did, ran the initial program to fund, redevelop the groundwater.
Mm-hmm.
Um, approximately four years ago, uh, when there was first a discussion regarding looking for water resources, I was of the belief that there was potential on the property, and I raced it with the town. Um, there was no response. I was offering they could come and explore as a water source. Then, uh, in the list, latest round, I could be, there's three places that had been identified, um, that were done sounding. I was unaware of that. Um, when that was up, to go back before the, the Board of Selectment, I did contact DPW, uh, Water and Sewer, and they said they weren't interested at this time, because it wasn't one that was identified. So essentially, what it was, is, um, we had choices before this whole development, um, that we could, you know, it was our property, it was our water, um, and that, based on a, a situation for the town, at that point in time, we weren't looking at developing it, um, that it was a reasonable agreement, just like with PEA. Um, so that's why they retained right. If in the future, um, you know, in, in regards to the, the conservation land that we're posing, um, it can be proposed as preservation, or recreation, or whatever the terms. Um, there is the density bonus involved, um, which is part of what's going on. When we discussed this with the Conservation Committee, based on the, um, character of the property, they had no problem with that, because it would be suitable. If you don't want, um, the development rights, we put it in there to allow it to be developed, rather than just being a pure preservation parcel, that's why that language went in. Um, in regards to the four hunters, um, that language is specific also. Um, for 30 years, uh, for the time I've owned the property, I'm an old marine, um, as an honor to our veterans, I've allowed four veterans to come in and do hunting, as a tribute to their sacrifice. Um, I wanted to continue that. Um, I brought that up at the initial in 2019 with the various boards. The Conservation Commission does not have an issue with it, because it's only four veterans to be administered, um, post 32 here in Exeter, uh, the, of the American Legion, looks like they will be, uh, the organization that will be chartered to essentially issue those special permits. And one of the reasons is that the hunters are also, the reason we have them on there is to manage the herd of the deer that, the property is unique, is it's like a nexus with all the other open space around, so the deer travel, um, and, but we can, we've had deer herds up to 18 going through the neighborhood, because it became overpopulated. So essentially, there's, that's in the language, that there's a bag limit of three per year. This is a management tool. That's, and that's, that's why we did that one.
So I will just leave it at this, that I admire that you let on your prop, when, you know, you own it, and I think it's a great thing. You did not mention it was the Exeter, an Exeter organization that would have that ability to fill a slot that is open.
Yeah, they would.
Um, but, so I'm just gonna, those are my concerns, I still have concerns about that.
Yeah.
Um, if it's going to be considered town conservation and, and these limits. So, I'm gonna leave it at that, thank you for explaining it, and you have explained it several times.
Okay.
Um, but, anyway, I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
And I, may I?
Yeah.
I will echo that, that like, L through LM and O, that, those are very, I've never seen those, like, retained, um, about water rights, and, you know, you gotta, you know, you gotta, I'm an additional insured on the, on the, I mean, why, you're not even, you're not, you don't even have any ownership of that parcel, so I'm not even sure why that's being asked.
A, A, B, C, the F?
You know, maintaining, you know, that we, it forces us to have the right to remove, you know, the, the, no, the obligation to remove beaver and beaver dams, I mean, it just puts a lot of, um, you know, coyotes, we have, we have to control them, uh, declare them a nuisance, so, I just, I haven't found this, I, I don't know if I've seen that in too many, if any, um, documents, I'd be skeptical about, you know, it's, it's part of, you're part of getting, part of giving the land is getting a density bonus.
Right.
But then you're giving it, and then you're kinda keeping all these, it seems that way. I've never, I haven't seen this before, so that's, that's my, my point of view.
I think the point, to Mr. Brown's question last time was, you know, draft, this is a draft, and we're receiving feedback, and to the extent that those things are not things that the planning board's interested in seeing, we envision the process after conditional approval being exactly what Mr. Sharples said earlier. There's a discussion that Town Attorney will look at, Mr. Sharples will look at it, and, uh, and we reach an arrangement that, that makes sense and is consistent with what the board says tonight.
Yeah, and I agree with that, I just would, I think usually with the draft, you make comments on these, you say, you know, like, this is not, you know, we, you know.
So what would happen if, uh, there was a nuisance being created by coyotes on, uh, other town land, like, the stuff off of, um, 85 there?
I think there's.
I mean, it'd be up to the discretion of the property owner.
Huh?
It would be up to the discretion of the property owner.
Town forest.
Well, then, yeah.
Town forest, and then coyotes are coming from the town forest, and they're killing my cats.
Yeah.
So what do I, what are my options as a citizen in Exeter?
Yeah, you can shoot.
There's what?
There's no close season, you can shoot whenever you want.
What does that mean, I can go onto the town land and just? Really? So why do we need this in here then?
Well, because this is, goes beyond, no, this goes beyond that, saying that the, the actual, the grantor can, grantor can kinda raise it, and say, hey, you got a coyote problem, you need to, you shall go out and force the town to go out and control the coyote population, that's the way I read that.
The point here is that.
All legal and equitable remedies against the grantee, with the grantee being the town of Exeter. I mean, he, I agree, I think it is putting some onus on the town that's unnecessary.
Yeah, that I haven't seen before.
I think Mr. Grissette is really trying to be sensitive. He talked last time about neighborhood pets and stuff. I think this is an abundance of caution, I don't, I'm not sure it's necessary, that's why we're getting this feedback. I think these are things that Mr. Grissette has done over the last 30, 30 years.
Oh, fishing game, we're paying for it.
Yeah.
Well, what, what rights would he, what rights will he still have, if this is going on? Will he, is Christian right, would he be able to go there and just do that as an Abutter, as a citizen?
I guess it all depends on the language of this.
No, without, without.
It absolutely does, Dave, uh, because the openers, the town forests up behind my house.
Yeah.
South of Route 101, no hunting is allowed, north of Route 101. You can hunt out there as, as though you.
In the language of the conservation, conservation deeds, yeah. So if it's silent, oh, what he's saying, no hunting.
No, you, the four people could hunt coyotes.
Yeah, so we have to get the veterans to come out and.
Or you could, you could allow management of that by the Abutter versus putting, I'd be, I'd be hesitant to put the requirement on the town of Exeter to create a coyote management plan for this problem.
I guess I have no problem with that being the town's decision to do, but this seems to indicate that there's another party that could come and force the town, because it says the grantee shall control the presence of population of coyotes, and someone can come and say, hey, you have to, town, do that, and it just, why expose us to that kinda liability?
Yeah, I think it creates liability for the town, 'cause if any coy, if, if two coyotes take a tromp through the new neighborhood and start wiping out animals, somebody could then say, hey, the town didn't fulfill their obligation under this deed, and now they're liable for my pain and suffering, 'cause I just lost my dog. So, I think it needs to go, frankly. I think it's unnecessary, but I don't know how to handle the no hunting part. I don't know how to handle the no hunting part. Because if, if they do become a challenge, and the only people who are allowed to hunt are the four selected people, then literally, they would be the ones, I think that is right.
The way this is drafted, though, it's giving to the town the authority to manage, so I think that.
Manage it anyway, okay. Think we're okay with that? The town could go in?
Yes.
Okay.
The town can go in what?
And harvest the coyotes.
Yeah, we can, I, I'm not worried about that, I mean, uh.
Well, I was just wondering, the no hunting part.
Yeah. And then, apparently, after the transfer, when the grantor is no longer even an owner of the property, they have the right to post it temporarily or permanently, that's the way I read it. So I quite, I, I don't, what, what?
Which one's that?
It's, um, it's Reserved Rights 3D. The grantor reserves the right to post a portion or all of the property, temporarily or permanently, in the event the public access proves detrimental to the open space and conservation value.
And that's, this is, this is subjective for you.
I did, I did, I, I thought, I agree with you Nancy, that a lot of these were like, I kinda, I was like.
Very uncomfortable.
Which one are we talking about?
Very comfortable.
I agree.
It is 3D.
3D.
Well, or almost any of them.
Yes, I have that one circle.
I mean, you still retain the right to, to post against vehicles motorized, you know, you, you can post against hunting, temporary or temporary. You can, even in the event, if the town fails to fulfill their obligations to remove the beaver dams, you can take steps through, legal steps to, you know, force us to do it.
Okay, I'm not an attorney.
But you go on behind.
But he's not the one who wrote this up.
He's the one representing you.
Yeah, I know. Uh, the intent behind this, I think, is that, in talking with the Conservation Commission, what we're looking at is doing a sign, uh, which we would be paying for, for the new conservation area, similar to the one behind the YMCA, I don't know if you've walked back there, the, uh, what's her name? It's where the old practice field used to be, in that conservation area. There's a, there's a sign there, it's got a map, it's got a history of the property, and it's got a list of, uh, what's allowed and what's not allowed. That's what I communicated, is that we will be, you know, working with the Conservation Commission to come up with the sign that says this, and that got translated into this, um, which is, what was agreed, there's not gonna be mechanized vehicles, uh, you know, it's not, that property's not, uh, suitable for mountain biking, um, so that, that's why you see these different things about, but that was the whole idea. And on that sign at, what's the name, do you remember the name of the, the conservation land, below the YMCA, over the footbridge?
It used to be the old horse track or something out there.
Yeah, there was the apple field, and then.
It's known as to put a lot of money in to have a football field, and it's all soggy mess, it didn't work.
But anyway, they, they had these little signs.
We had the bridge over there that we called Floyd Memorial Bridge, because he was on the school board at the time that decided the bridge put it, so, that's getting very rusty.
Yes, but anyway, this is all about that sign, as far as I can tell.
Yeah, that's not how I read it.
But that's, no, but it's.
Not even close, so, uh, I, you're reserving, you look at, I look at property like.
I think their reserved rights just need to go away.
Yeah, I mean, that's, property comes with like a bundle of, I consider a bundle of sticks, I, I think I've given this analogy, when each stick represents.
Classic analogy.
All right, and, and what you're doing is, you're giving us the bundle of sticks, and you're like, well, these 10, I'm taking, and holding on to them. Um, I, I haven't seen that, I mean, maybe in some, you know, about maybe with logging or tree management, but not to force and have legal remedy against us to, to the town.
Right.
It just puts a lot of liability on the town.
And it's their own discretion to start, like you said, posting, permanently, temporarily, their own discretion, you know, open space isn't working well for me now, so I'm gonna post it, closed, I don't know, right?
It's there.
You're retaining a lot of, a lot of the, a lot of the sticks in that bundle.
Yeah.
The nice thing about this discussion is that there's no question at all where the planning board stands on any of these things. I think the minutes will capture that accurately, they'll be memorialized forever. Um, look, the idea here is that we don't want the coy, coyotes to get out of control, but if the town's managing it, they'll manage the property as they manage the other property. Complaints will come, probably end on Dave's desk first.
It's fine.
We wanna make sure that there's a nice sign. I mean, that's really what the posting thing is about. So, we're talking about management of the thing, and if, if possible, if we can arrange through the Legion, someone to manage this lottery long after Brian's, you know, no longer living there, or moved on, or we're all dead, then great. If that's a bridge too far, then, then that's an issue we'll take up after approval with the town, because the town's uncomfortable, or the town attorney looks at it and says, wow, this, this is, this is unwieldy, I don't like this. But that's the intent, we would, we would like to basically maintain the status quo. Four veterans have been hunting the property for the last 30 years, that's the idea, we'd like to keep it that way.
Right.
Yeah, I understand, I, to me, it's either gonna be everyone or no one. That, that's my concern, is saying that, you know, four people, and this is absolutely nothing against veterans or anything, I think it's great, you did that.
Where do you get the four people? Is it in there?
It is in there.
It is.
Um, that's my concern, is saying, you know, it, I, I have a concern with this one.
It's like giving a person permission to hunt on your property.
Yeah, but it's town property, it's, it's town conservation land.
The only, the only, because I don't post my property, the only people who have to give permission are the people that get a moose permit, they have to have written permission to hunt for my property, so.
But this is no longer gonna be Brian's property, the Grissette property, or it does, right? It's, it's town, so that's the difference. That's where we have a change of circumstance, if you will.
Right. To, to, to maybe shorten this, 'cause what I'm hearing, I'm not hearing that you actually even want these. I'm not hearing those things, so.
I think a reservation on the water was something that Brian was interested in, because of the history of discussions with the town. Certainly, the concern on behalf of the neighborhood is coyotes in the neighborhood, I mean, so, he's been vigilant about those things, that's why they ended up in the draft, but I think it can be massaged to be a lot broader and a lot more palpable for the town.
Yeah, I could understand the language about the water, if there was a plan in place, but there was, uh, he offered it, there was no plan, so.
The hunting's not, yeah, allowing hunting, how many hunting's not my concern, but like, LM and O, B, uh.
What alphabet?
D, E, and F, just, just go away.
Yeah, the hunting is literally just either all or no one.
Dave, can you actually, would you do that same list again, please?
Yes.
M, M.
I said LM.
Section, uh, two, B, uh, no, two, section two, youth limitations, LM, N, and O, just disappear.
Yeah.
Reserved rights, three, um, B, the first sentence in C, and D, E, and F. Then I have no issue. That's what, I'm not sure, I haven't, you know, unless, like, explain, like, what's behind this.
Conservation land, aren't there state mandated rights to allow hunting?
Well, that's why I crossed out the first sentence in C, that the grantor reserves the right to post against hunting, including but not limited to trap, that may be contrary to, you know.
Well, okay, so my neighborhood in Exeter.
Cause it's pot, when the town owns.
Says, no hunting, the town posted it, and a hunter, this year, was given permission to hunt, and I had no, I personally have no issue with it, uh, right in our neighborhood. And he quoted some laws, I think he talked to Doug, uh, he seemed very educated and very respectful, and I think, I don't think he got anything, but.
That's my understanding.
So.
Yeah.
Okay, so the town posted there's no hunting, but you're still allowed to hunt.
Who gave him permission, did he?
Well, this, I, I. Well, this, I, I don't, I don't really want to get into that. I don't think my review gets into that. It just says the grantor, like, you're giving it, you're giving the grantor, who has no involvement in the property now, except as a, an adjacent, a butter, now has the right to go in and post. That, that's the issue.
I get that, I get that. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
But I guess I'm trying to, I'm, I'm trying to figure out if we are saying there's no hunting on a property, but there actually is. It is allowed.
On this particular one, or in...
Potentially, but I'm not sure.
On the land that I live next to?
Yeah, but I'm talking about this one at the limit of four people, if you're going to let hunting, if hunting's allowed, I don't know if we can actually...
My question is, can we actually exclude it?
I'm not asking to exclude it, that's not my point.
I know you're not. I know what you're saying. You're saying you don't want to treat four people different than everybody.
I'm just, I'm just saying that if it's open for hunting, it needs to be open for everyone.
Understood.
Okay.
But I think it's open for hunting, no matter what we do, is my point.
Yeah.
That's what I think. That's what I've experienced.
I think certainly, I don't know what the situation with your, yeah, I don't know what the deal is with your, uh, the land next to you. I mean, it's going to be based on the conveyance. I mean, these conveyancing documents all the time make, are really broad, or they're really narrow. I mean, sometimes there, this amount of people can come on, these are the hours that people can be there, and sometimes they're very broad. And the older they are, the more broad they are. And I think you're right, there may be a case about just town-owned land that's not subject to any conservation easement. If there aren't restrictions in a deed, and it's just town-owned land, there is some, something, some case law about, uh, rights to, for the public to hunt. But when you're conveying a property, you can make it subject to anything. And, and at that point, the town holds it subject to what is conveyed. Like Dave said, the sticks that were conveyed.
The conditions, okay.
Well, how about fishing?
You going to fish in the vernal pool?
As long as, as long as it's got a, as long as it's got a lake, how about, could you, where's Jim go? Fishing.
You could.
Of course you could.
You could, if you wanted to.
Well, the, the language of this conservation easement limits the, the public's use to passive recreation, which is really walking.
That's pretty passive.
Yeah.
Oh, goodness. This rabbit hole is getting deeper.
Have we been discussing this, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, long enough. We got, I'm afraid we're going to have to table this another time. I thought we might be a little bit squared away, but we got a long discussion about these.
You can assure my clients that you'll make a parting lot if you table this again.
We've got a lot of waivers to go through, and it's...
I think we know where we stand on that, so I think we can, I mean, I, I mean, is the board in agreement that, that we probably shouldn't have any lots, the town shouldn't be gone any, what I think is unnecessarily liability and accepting this?
Absolutely, yeah. Got to be as easy as possible.
The only, the only thing that, what was your thing about, I'm going to get back to hunting one again. What was your thing on C?
All I did was remove the first sentence. I mean, I, all, all I thought was, as far as I was going to go with this, was that I didn't want any liability, you know, you don't need liability to the town for legal exposure to a prior owner to come and, and force us, force the town to do something.
Right.
You know, we should be able to decide that for ourselves if there is an, an issue. I just don't want that. Uh, that's, that's all where I was coming from. The, the hunting, you know, is like, the grantor reserving the right to post against hunting.
So...
I don't see why you would give someone, like, the homeowners association's going to be, they're, they're going to have, you know, potential access to it.
I would think that's a conservation issue.
The Grissette is not going to own it any longer, the town is.
I think the point of that specific sentence was to literally allow grantor, or in his absence, this legion body that will be managing it to literally post active hunting happening, so that the public who's showing up to take a walk is aware that there is, I think that's the spirit of this language.
But you're saying you're posting against hunting?
Against, yeah, somebody needs to look at that language again, because that's not what it says right now.
Okay, you're talking about posting that currently is.
Right.
Well, you don't post in favor.
That could be something.
Yeah, I think we're clear on where, where, where we are.
Should you just allow hunting, then?
I'm, I'm not taking it.
It's allowed unless you have signs every fifty...
I'm just trying to protect the town's liability, and that's all I'm trying to do.
It's allowed with permission.
Allowed.
It's allowed with permission, with, who's permission, but what type of permission?
This is his conservation.
The chapter...
Oh, so you, so you're, I am trying, I'm personally okay with that, I'm just kidding.
I mean, if you want to control hunting on your property, then you can be that specific.
Right.
Yeah, I think at the end of the day, that's going to be decided past this board?
Yes, I do, too.
In the old days, hunters stopped by your house.
Yeah, but I think strongly that the board should not, you know, recommending any liability on the town's behalf, unneeded liability.
The attorneys will...
So, are we comfortable with this?
I don't think there's more we're going to do on this conservation.
Okay.
Is there? Anybody else want to weigh in on that, Gwen? Conservation at all?
No, I, I think, um, no, I don't have any more to add. I was going to suggest that if, if, uh, I mean, it's always interesting to see what other, other conservation easements look like, and you could probably go to Selt and ask them for some material that would help guide you, but, I mean, Brian really has, has the reins to determine what he does and doesn't want out there, and it can be, well, I mean, as you, well, actually, I take that back. Never mind, I'm not...
I mean, he's offering it to the town. He could if he retained ownership and didn't take advantage of a 10% density bonus.
Yes.
But the fact that he's taking advantage of this 10% and dating it to the town, you know, and he's not dictating those terms, we are, because we are the ones accepting it.
It's different from buying conservation easement, it's different from that, and I'm, I'm...
I mean, the way it's drafted in Dave's draft, conditions of approval, it's a condition of approval to convey that, I mean, and it's not a conservation easement, it's a, it's the fee interest. I mean, we're conveying the parcel to the town, but it's a condition of approval. So, if we don't square the language in a way that reflects the will of this board, and the town agrees, and Dave agrees, we can't convey it, and we don't fulfill the approval. So, that's what it comes down to. I think we really heard you tonight.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Do we want to move on along? Are there any other issues that we need to hammer around?
Oh, can I just read, no, I'll read really quickly. This is in the minutes. It says, Mr. Gove explained that the road salt is an unfortunate part of living in New England, but the runoff will be controlled by the detention basins before it goes out, and the area could be maintained as a low-salt area. That's where I got that. That's all.
Okay. Good to know.
Good to know.
I remember that. Well, Danny?
Gwen, is that something that you'd propose, putting in the covenants and the HOA covenants? I mean, we could request that. It goes, I mean, there is low-salt, eco-sensitive salt, you know, snow management that's possible, and it's probably more expensive, and it might require, you know, but if it's something that we could ask for.
It would be nice, given the sensitivity of the area around it.
I would agree. I mean, I do think that, you know, as much as we want all the stormwater and snow to melt into the system, like, when we get all that, it sprays, it kind of goes everywhere. It's slushy, it's, um, I think it'd be a good thing to put in there.
Just one thing you keep in mind, um, the way this is designed, right now, Tamrin Lane, um, has no forbays, no treatment, drainage ponds, it's going directly into both sides where Scanon Brook is. That's where the culverts are and they lead to. So, we're actually, with the creation of the road, we're actually going to be taking some of that salt from, uh, the town's road, and putting it through our forbay and drainage pond. So, we are doing a reduction, um, but having to treat the towns as a, I think it might be difficult to do so, uh, if you, depending on what you, you put in, if the town is also contributing the salt, that just...
We're not asking you to treat anything differently, we're just asking to, to not, to, that snow maintenance will be low-salt.
Right, I'm just saying, but just, I just wanted to point it to recognize, there's only so much we can do, because Tamrin Lane is interconnected to what...
Right, we're not asking you to manage it.
We just don't want to make it worse.
Yeah, I, that's why I'm just, yeah.
Yeah. It's getting like for all of us.
Yeah.
Oh, we're...
Don't speak for yourself.
Are we ready to talk about any of the waivers?
I am.
Okay. Yes.
I don't care if there's waivers.
Oh, my gosh. So, but I'm looking at the first one, the slope granite curbing, I believe we dealt with that last meeting.
Yeah, you don't need, my recommendation, you don't need to provide that.
So, then I...
And I believe the applicant is in agreement that you don't need to provide.
We need Attorney Jose to come up, please, and we'll, let's work on the waivers.
I thought we went through that.
I think we did this with the last...
I thought they came up and we went through the criteria at the last meeting.
You've blown through those pretty thoroughly last time?
Yeah, I think they've been reviewed.
No, but didn't you review all the criteria and want justification for your waivers? I remember that.
We didn't deliberate on it at all.
You didn't deliberate on it, no, but the applicant provided the presentation.
Okay. So, I'm open to a motion. Roadway parameters and river, and waiver, and waiver motion.
Mr. Chair, I can make a motion?
Yes.
After reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I move at the request of Brian Grissette, Planning Board Case Number 20-2, for a waiver from Section 9 dot 17 dot 10 dot C of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations to permit proposed access roadway with less than required be approved.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Okay, roll call vote?
Wait a minute, hold it.
Yes, discussion?
I am concerned that we need, and I know we've been down this road and we talked about it before, but I think we need to specifically reference the waiver criteria. We need to, and I know, David, you're going to...
You read it into the, uh, you weren't here, Peter. He read it into the record last meeting, on each one. He already did that.
But he read in the reference?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, yes, but by, by section?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine, if it was done...
The waiver request and what it takes to grant.
That's fine, and it was specific, excuse me, specific reference to 13.7. That was my concern.
Yep, very legitimate.
Fine, thank you.
Yep.
And just for clarification in the motion, when you're saying, after reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, that is Section 13.7?
I know it is, but it's the reference, okay, never mind, forget it. If it's already been handled, thank you.
Okay.
Better show up every time.
Call for, call for the vote, I'm going to ask Gwen to start, please, on this waiver, I mean, excuse me, yeah.
Just around the roadway parameters?
Roadway parameters, yes.
Um, yes.
And Pete?
Yes.
I bet, say yes?
Yes.
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 Okay. No, no, so that passes. Sidewalk waiver motion.
Do you want to do that one, too?
Sure.
After reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I move at the request of Brian Grissette, Planning Board Case Number 20-2, for a partial waiver from Section 9 dot 15 to permit a portion of the proposed sidewalk to be less than five feet. It says five feet, parentheses, five inches?
It does.
But it's, yeah, five feet is what should be on the record. In width be approved.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All right, a call for the vote, Nancy?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Perimeter buffer strip waiver motion. Section 6.9 point 6 point 1 point 2 and 1 and 11 point 2 point 8.
Would you like me to do that one?
Sure.
After reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I move at the request of Brian Grissette, Planning Board Case 20-2, for a waiver from Section 9 point 6 point 1 point 2 and 11 point 2 point 8 of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations to provide a 100-foot vegetated buffer strip and a 60-foot no-disturb area along the perimeter lot line of the track be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Jen?
Is this the one where we have to add the exception for the patios?
No, I think they, they made it clear on the plans.
Okay.
That that's part of the waiver.
Okay.
So, by approving the waiver, as you just did, you're approving the site plan that shows the 325 square feet of patio.
Okay, so we don't need a special condition for this?
I don't believe you do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the clarity, Jen. All right. Aaron, let's start with you this time.
Yes.
And Pete?
Yes.
And Gwen?
I will vote no on this one.
Okay, I vote yes. Uh, Madam Selectperson?
Molly.
Jen?
Um, I didn't vote.
You didn't vote.
I'll, I'll vote yes.
Yes, okay, Jen?
Yes.
Nancy? Okay. Uh, that vote's 6-1. Carries. Whoa, next. Lot consolidation and subdivision motion.
I'll give it a try. I move at the request of Brian Grissette, Planning Board Case Number 20-2, for lot consolidation and subdivision as presented be approved.
Second. Moved and, and seconded, any discussion? Hearing done. Gwen?
Yes.
And, Pete?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Motion carries. Single-family open space development motion.
I think we skipped one.
Yeah, and I would go to the lot line adjustment motion, but I would put the single-family open space development motion at the bottom, so I would do the lot line adjustment motion, and then the conditional use permits, and then the single family. Because the single family is reliant on the, in my opinion, the conditional use permits to be granted.
I, so I will do this one too, if you'd like. I move at the request of Brian Grissette, Planning Board Case Number 20-2, for lot line adjustment be, lot line adjustment approval be approved.
Second, please. Thank you, Aaron. Any discussion?
I, I'd like to discuss this one for just a minute.
Okay.
Um, so, and I'm sorry I didn't bring this up earlier, it was something I had concerns about before, and there was no time to bring it up, and then I just forgot. But, so, when we're adjusting, this lot line adjustment basically is the one that sort of creates the, the funny two driveway situation that I'm not really happy with, like, basically the, the road apple, Wild Apple Lane coming in, and then the driveway coming in, and the, but they're both coming in on the same curb cut. Um, and I guess, I don't, I don't know, I just, I, I just don't know, does anyone, does everyone feel comfortable with that situation? Like, the, the, the very skinny, the, I forget the abutter's name, but the...
Very good.
Oh, thank you. The very, very skinny lot coming down onto Cullen Way, um, it just seems to me like, um, not a good planning move. I don't know. Dave, do you have any, like, is it, do you have any concerns about that?
The, the skinny part of the lot, I mean, Doug Eastman went over it, said it met the zoning and had the frontage requirements. Generally speaking, you like to keep intersections and driveways about 75 feet apart, um, but it's what they wanted, they didn't want to be tied into the roadway, so I was caught, you know, and then due to the amount of people that, you know, in a, in a dead-end street, it didn't, it didn't rise to the level of like, oh, I can, you, I would recommend the board not accept this. I guess is that's where I'm coming from, you know? So I have an issue, it's kinda like, yeah, I don't like it, you know, it's ideally no, but in this situation with the everyone, you know, people wanting it, and the person that's gonna be affected most accepting it that way, then, okay.
So from a frontage standpoint, there's, there's no issue with it only being like 10 feet?
No, Doug determined, uh, that it had adequate frontage on Wild Apple Lane, I believe. I, I, I know I gave it to Doug, Doug made the determination that the frontage could be gotten off the right-of-way on Wild Apple.
I think that's the part that I was like, really, I didn't understand you could do that.
Well, I don't make that call, I gave that to Doug Eastman, he's the building inspector, he determines the zoning ordinance, and he made that determination.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad we were clear.
Thank you, Jen, for clarifying that. Okay.
Suggested conditional use permit, wetlands motion?
Well, I have to vote on this, that was discussion.
That was discussion.
Uh, any more discussion?
Maybe get a handle myself.
Seeing none, then, Nancy?
Yes.
Jen?
I'm gonna say no on this one.
Okay, Molly?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
So, uh, 6-1. Carries. Now, conditional use next, did you say?
Yes, should, skip the single family.
Okay, conditional use permit, wetlands motion.
I'll do this one.
Okay.
Excuse me. After reviewing the criteria for a wetlands conditional use permit, I move at the request of Brian Grissette, Planning Board Case Number 20-2, for a conditional use permit be approved.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Gwen?
Yes.
I vote yes. Aaron?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Carries. Now, single-family open space development?
No.
Nope?
Shoreland.
Shoreland, okay.
C U B shore.
Conditional use permit, shoreline motion.
Uh, I'll go. Sorry, Aaron.
No.
Didn't mean to beat you to it. After reviewing the criteria for a shoreline conditional use permit, I move at the request of Brian Grissette, Planning Board Case Number 20-2, for a conditional use permit be approved.
Second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Pete. Discussion. Seeing none? Oh, Jen, how about we show you?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
And Molly?
Yes.
Aaron?
This is like the checkerboard style.
Well, some of you know, try to keep it on your toes.
Yes.
Vote yes. Pete?
Yes.
And Gwen?
Yes.
Carries. Now...
Now you got it.
Single-family open space development motion. This is the biggie. Anybody wish to make this motion?
Should we have Dave read the conditions first?
Uh, well, with all the conditions, yeah, probably.
Yes.
Where do you want to put your condition?
Good luck with that.
I can.
All right.
Yeah, let's, yeah, this is the last one, so...
Suggested conditions approval, uh, in, in the event the board got there, and they are, number one, a DWG file of the subdivision plan shall be provided to the town planner showing all property lines and monumentation prior to signing the final plans. This plan must be an NAD 1983 state plane at New Hampshire, FIPS, 2,800 feet coordinates. Two, all monumentations shall be set prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy. Three, a pre-construction meeting shall be arranged by the applicant and is contracted with the town engineer prior to any site work commencing. The following must be submitted for review and approval prior to the pre-con meeting. The stormwater provision, pollution prevention plan, if applicable, be submitted to and reviewed for approval by the DPW, and a project schedule and construction cost estimate. All comments in the Underwood Engineering, Inc. review letters and the TRC comment letters and any subsequent comments as the result of further review shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the town planner prior to signing the final plans. Five, all appropriate fees to be paid, including, but not limited to sewer water connection fees, impact fees, and inspection fees, including third-party inspections, prior to the issuance of a building permit or a certificate of occupancy, whichever is applicable. Six, annual report requirement set forth on page nine in the Stormwater Management BMP Inspection and Maintenance Plan dated 1/13/2020 and received by the town on March 16, 2021 shall be an ongoing condition of approval and noted in the Homeowners Association bylaws and declaration where appropriate. Seven, all applicable state permit approval numbers shall be noted on the final plans. Eight, all condominium docks, including the declaration and bylaws, shall be submitted to the town planner for review and approval prior to signing the final plans. In the event the town planner deems that review is needed by the town attorney, this review shall be at the applicant's expense. Nine, the limit of cut disturbance shall be flagged in the field prior to any site work, and these flags shall be maintained until a certificate of occupancy is issued. Ten, if applicable by the Exeter Department of Public Works, the applicant shall submit the land use and stormwater management information about the project using the PTAP online municipal tracking tool. The PTAP submitted must be accepted prior, uh, by DPW prior to the pre-construction meeting. Eleven, the applicant shall submit proposed names of the private access drive to the E911 Committee for review in accordance with Town Ordinance, Chapter 14. The street name shall be adopted prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for any units. Twelve, assurances for completion of all proposed public improvements shall be provided in accordance with Section 12 of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations prior to any site work. The proposed open space shall be deeded to the town in accordance with the plan. The language in the deed shall be reviewed and approved by the town. This shall be completed prior to the issuance of a building permit for any dwelling unit or structure. Fourteen was Justin's, which is, prior to the pre-construction meeting, the applicant or its successor or assigned will engage an arborist to review the swamp white oaks on the south side of the new road and develop a tree protection plan that shall identify any regional measures to ensure protection of the swamp white oaks during and after construction. This plan shall be submitted to the town prior to or at the pre-construction meeting. And that is all. So there are 14 proposed conditions.
I move at the request of Brian Grissette, Planning Board Case Number 20-2, for site plan approval of the proposed single-family condominium open space development be approved with the following conditions, as just stated by our town planner.
If there's a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jen. Any discussion? Hear none? Oh, I don't know. I was going first. Yes? Molly?
He's doing every other.
I can see that.
Trying to figure out his pattern.
Jen?
I haven't...
Molly hasn't voted.
Yeah, I haven't voted yet.
I can come back to you if you'd like.
Yeah, come back.
Jen?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
And Gwen?
I'm, I think on principle, just on the waiver that I said no to, I'm, I'm sticking with that.